So, good morning, everyone. Bienvenue à tout le monde. And welcome to the final day of the QCGN's hearings on Bill 96. C'est la dernière journée des audiences publiques pour la loi 96. Et on vous souhaite tous et toutes bienvenue. The offices of the Quebec Community Groups Network are situated on the traditional territory of the Kanen Kahaaka, a place which has long served as the site of meeting and exchange amongst many First Nations, including the Kanen Kahaaka, and I apologize for mispronouncing, of the Hadonosni Confederacy, Huron-Wendak, Abeniki, and Sinibinabé nations. We recognize and respect the Kanen Kehaka as the traditional custodians of the lands and waters on which we meet today. I would like to start by, first of all, thanking and reintroducing my colleagues on the panel. It's been not only the last five days that we've worked together, but we have worked together since a couple of months. And I want to thank them personally for also their insights, their questions, their congeality and their teamwork. And I want to begin first by saying that unfortunately, Senator John Fraser, former senator and former editor of the Montreal Gazette, regrettably will not be with us. And also Marcus Tabachnik, who is the former chair of the Lester B. Pearson School Board, former president and executive director of the Quebec English School Board Association, and former president of the Canadian School Boards Association, also will be unable to join us today. But I am joined by Thomas Ledwell. And hi, Thomas, and who's a former journalist and who recently served as a senior director of the Trudeau Foundation. And I am Aleni Bakopanos. I was a former member of parliament. And I am the vice president of the Canadian Association of Former Parliamentarians, as well as the chair of Equal Voice, a national organization promoting more women in politics, and the honorary chair of the McGill Women's Alumni Association. So I welcome everybody and I thank you for being again with us. Over the past few days, we have heard from a wide range of speakers, from the seniors' community, leading jurists and academics, business groups, heads of cultural communities, and community organizations, to name a few. I hope you've had a chance also, if you've missed any of the hearings, to go to the YouTube that the QCGN has available on their site and go over, because it's very, the type of testimony we heard is very informative and very significant in terms of the impact of Bill 96. I wish to thank all those who have participated on these hearings. It threatens to be a significant, it threatens to have an insignificant impact on the Quebec of tomorrow. And we thank all our speakers for participating in this important process of dialogue and discussion. We have an exciting, and I also want to thank all the participants who have joined us, and some of them have joined us for all five sessions. So I thank them also and look forward to their questions or they've been chatting between themselves also, I've noticed, which is also very good. So we have today an exciting lineup. We will be hearing from the Lord Reading Society, the QCGN Health and Social Services Committee, the Montreal Council of Women, the Black Community Resource Centre, and the Quebec Board of Black Educators. But I must admit, I am really looking forward to the last two speakers on our program today, where we will be hearing from the next generation of English-speaking Quebecers, where the impact of this legislation will affect the future, their future in Quebec. Le format de ces audiences est simple. Chacun, chaque invité dispose d'une période d'environ quinze minutes. Et pour faire ses commentaires et sa présentation, cela sera suivi d'une période d'échange de dix à quinze minutes entre le témoin et les panellistes. Et aussi peut-être aussi des questions qui sont dans, qui sont surveillées par les participants. Les présentations peuvent être faites en anglais ou en français, toutes comme les réponses et les questions qui suivent. I should point out, the views are welcome to provide feedback. Also point out that your views are welcome, as I said earlier, to provide feedback and suggest questions for the panelists to ask the presenters. Furthermore, as I said earlier, and I want to repeat it, you can always go back to the videotapes that were made. And by the way, it is being videotaped at the moment and will be available online via the QCGN website. Le but de cette audience est de permettre ce que le gouvernement du Québec a étouffé. C'est-à-dire une discussion libre et ouverture sur les effets pertinents et potentiels du projet de loi 96. I wish to stress that those appearing are speaking for themselves, not on behalf of the QCGN. While we are all aware that we are focusing on very controversial and hot-button topics, let's do our best to engage in a respectful dialogue. And I know all the speakers will do that. We urge everyone, however strongly they feel, to avoid inflammatory language, which tends to inflame, and not to enlighten or educate. The, um, these hearings are, are not, are to provide information, as I said earlier, on what the community thinks, not to vent. There are avenues for that. Now for the first brief. Founded in nineteen forty-eight, the Lord Reading Law Society is a collective voice of Jewish jurists in Quebec. Serving the legal community of the Jewish commu-, uh, serving the legal community, the Jewish community and the community at large, it is dedicated to the furtherirance of human rights and fundamental freedoms. Not surprisingly, it provided arguments in opposition to Bill twenty-one. And we look forward to their input today. Representing the society are Doris Levine as president, Frank Schlesinger, the chair of the Human Rights Committee, and Michael Bergman. I also have another name, Ted Goloff and Eric Maldoff. So there are, and without, I want to thank the Lord Reading Society and without much delay, I pass over to, I believe, who's, uh, who's presenting first? I'm just looking at my notes.
I'll begin, it's Dory Levine.
Okay, Metro Dorian Levine, welcome. And please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, so it's Dory Levine. On behalf of the Lord Reading Law Society, we'd like to thank QCGN for giving us this opportunity to present our brief with respect to Bill ninety-six, particularly as you just mentioned, given that we do not have the opportunity to present it before the National Assembly hearings. Um, I'd first like to introduce the members of our drafting committee who participated in preparing the brief, some of who should be on screen or will be on screen, I hope. Um, with me are Metro Frank Schlesinger, the chairman of our Human Rights Committee, as well as Metro Rob Steinman, co-chair of the Human Rights Committee, who I believe is offline and watching. Um, Metro Theodore Goloff, Metro Michael Bergman, who you're familiar with and has presented before on this matter. Um, Metro Neil Hazan and Metro Eric Maldoff, who's also familiar to QCGN. And finally, Metro Andrew Clicker, our past presidents of the Lord Reading Law Society. Um, as an introductory remark, we'd like to stipulate that the Lord Reading Law Society does support the protection, the defense of the French language in Quebec. However, we would prefer that such protection be done in an inclusive and non-divisive or exclusionary manner. Um, I'd like to introduce Frank and pass the baton to him to present our brief. And then we would be pleased to answer any of your questions or those of the audience. So to Frank.
Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. J'aimerais moi aussi vous remercier de nous avoir invités pour faire notre présentation sur le projet de loi 96. L'association de droit Lord Reading appuie la défense de la langue française à Québec. D'autre part, comme a dit Maître Levine, nous aimons que cette défense soit faite avec l'intention de réunir toute la population du Québec d'une façon à éviter la division entre les divers composantes de la nation québécoise. Le mémoire sera présenté en langue anglaise veut que vous avez été désignés comme les défenseurs des droits linguistiques, des non-francophones durant ces, euh, ces jours. Néanmoins, la version française de notre mémoire sera déposée en même temps que la version anglaise et sera affichée sur notre site web aujourd'hui même.
So I will proceed with the presentation of the brief. I will speak quickly due to the time constraints. So by way of introduction, seldom has proposed legislation impacted access to justice and equality before the law and the most fundamental principles underpinning our legal system to the extent that Bill ninety-six does. Its provisions will soon be reviewed by parliamentary commission through public hearings, to which exceptionally and alarmingly, only persons or institutions who have been invited by the commission to address it have standing to submit observations, criticisms, suggestions for amendment, which is why it's so important that we were invited to here so that we can be part of the rest of the population presenting these briefs. True to our mission statement as an association of lawyers dedicated to the protection and advancement of human rights within Quebec's legal order, the Lord Reading Law Society cannot remain indifferent to Bill ninety-six. This summary brief seeks to address some of the bill's provisions that fundamentally challenge the rule of law in the most direct, immediate, and egregious ways. Bill ninety-six's proposed provisions extend far beyond language rights and undermine constitutionally protected, fundamental, and inalienable rights that belong to Quebec's population as a whole. The bill creates a hierarchy with respect to fundamental rights, making language paramount while severely restricting or eliminating human rights for both the Quebec and Canadian charters, protected by both the Quebec and Canadian charters, which are essential to the rule of law in a free and democratic society. The English-speaking minority of Quebec, as well as Quebec's indigenous communities, are and have been, for at least the past two hundred and fifty years, part of le peuple du Québec and la nation du Québec. They are part of Quebec's fabric and population. Non-francophones have made and continue to make significant contributions to every facet of Quebec life, culture and economy. The fundamental rights of such communities are stated to be inalienable. The government and National Assembly of Quebec have an obligation to safeguard these communities' rights within the framework of la nation du Québec. Bill ninety-six fails to confirm that the English-speaking minority and indigenous communities of Quebec are part of la nation du Québec, du Québec. Bill ninety-six may be interpreted as excluding non-francophones in general from the definition of la nation. Currently, every Quebecer has the right to fulfill his or her obligations under the laws of Quebec in the language in which they can best express themselves. Bill ninety-six changes this. Bill ninety-six amends section forty-two of the Interpretation Act to read as follows. Every act is presumed to allow using only French in the performance of the obligations it prescribes. Therefore, all Quebecers must exclusively use the French language to fulfill their legal obligations under all of the laws of Quebec. The use of any other language generally will not constitute fulfillment of those obligations. Bill ninety-six declares that the right to the French language is the paramount and supreme right over all other rights. The bill declares this supremacy both for individual rights and collective rights. The bill uses the notwithstanding clause of the Canadian Charter, which forms part of Canada's constitution, and a derogation clause of the Quebec Charter to override other rights which may detract from the right to use of the French language. With rights come obligations, which the bill enumerates in detail, extending through all facets of Quebec society. Justice Blanchard of the Quebec Superior Court in his twenty-twenty-one judgment on Bill twenty-one says, En effet, en ce qui concerne la charte québécoise, on note que la loi vingt-et-un stérilise sans restriction l'application de ses articles un et trente-huit, et qui l'envoient de même avec les articles deux et sept à quinze de la charte canadienne. This is in the case of Hack et Dal versus the Attorney General of Quebec. We believe that the same can be said of Bill ninety-six. The triumvirate of the new minister of the French language, the new commissioner of the French language, and the empowered Office Québécois de la langue française will oversee a system to ensure the mandatory and exemplary use of French in all parts of the civil administration, public agencies, para public agencies, healthcare facilities, school bodies, and municipalities. These three entities will have considerable regulation and policymaking authority, which will supplement Bill ninety-six. No one currently knows what these regulations and policies will say. Matters concerning the French language have therefore been turned over to a bureaucracy. Dispensing access to justice and health services at the very minimum requires the ability to communicate and understand the challenges at hand and to devise appropriate remedies. It requires clear communications and comprehension between the patients and the system. State-sanctioned restriction of communication rights would be inefficient and ineffective, and more importantly, could lead to tragic or even fatal results. The bill, in fact, provides a state-sanctioned legal and protected basis for discrimination against those whose common language is other than French, with non-compliance potentially leading to both civil and penal consequences, including huge fines. By amendments to the Act respecting legal publicity of enterprises, the office may, in the sectors or industries it selects, require employees, employers with more than five employees to declare as part of their annual declaration the proportion of employees not capable of communicating in French. The bill places limits on the rights of everyone to post-secondary education by capping the number of students, including francophone students, that may attend English-language séjeps, thereby restricting the freedom of adult and near-adult students to further their education in a non-francophone setting and improve their economic prospects in the global economy. The bill does not protect English-language health institutions and hospitals. Instead, in conjunction with other measures taken by the government, advisory bodies, regional healthcare and management services, CHUSIS and CIS, patient care services will now be subject to reevaluation in respect of the use of language other than French. This compromises the right to life and healthcare. Bill ninety-six provides that a person appointed to be a judge shall not be required to have a knowledge or a specific level of knowledge of a language other than French unless both the Minister of Justice and the new Minister of the French Language consider that the exercise of that office requires such knowledge and that all reasonable means have been taken to avoid imposing such a requirement. This applies to members of all administrative tribunals, including but not limited to the Tribunal des Droits de la Personne, the Tribunal Administratif du Travail, the Tribunal Administratif du Logement, as well as a small claims court where no one is represented by counsel. It also applies to bodies like the CNEST, where workers' hard-won rights are supposed to be protected by state agencies. If workers cannot express themselves in French, they will not be able to obtain justice if the judges cannot understand them. The bill requires that justice and legislation be dispensed in French. The bill requires, in, excuse me, increasingly, individuals choose to represent themselves before the diverse tribunals in Quebec. Anglophones will therefore be at a clear disadvantage, both in addressing a tribunal and understanding what the presiding judge is saying. The new section thirteen of the Charter of the French Language, as amended by Bill ninety-six, makes the restrictions on the judiciary set out in above applicable to persons appointed by the government or by a minister to exercise any adjudicative function within any agency of the civil administration. Bilingualism is discretionary and only upon the agreement of both ministers that both of the aforementioned conditions have been met. Henceforth, any pleading that emanates from or is prepared on behalf of a legal person that is drawn up in English must, on pain of it not being able to be filed, have attached to it a certified French translation. In the event of a discrepancy, it is unclear which version would prevail. Moreover, who is going to be approved for translation and certification? This is unknown. Furthermore, the legal person is required to bear the costs of the certified translation to French, which prevents serious costs and delays and access to justice concern in a society where the costs of litigation are already prohibitive to small and medium-sized businesses. Statutory offenses are prosecuted in the Court de Québec under Quebec Penal Code. The consequences of a judge being unable to speak or understand English can be horrendous and can result in errors in the court's appreciation of the evidence and in his judgment. By way of background, it took the government and National Assembly of Quebec more than twenty years to correct the approximately five thousand errors in the English version of the Quebec Civil Code originally adopted in nineteen ninety-four. Bill ninety-six attempts to set aside an already minimalist approach to English in the Quebec legal arena. The practical impact of a unilegal Quebec judiciary would be the judges and ultimately Quebecers would have less of an opportunity to derive the full benefit of non-French language case law from elsewhere in Canada that could materially affect outcomes in many areas of law, including those which are in rapid evolution. Perhaps more significantly, due to the French requirements of the bill, in a world dominated by cross-border trade, non-Quebec businesses would likely force Quebec resident businesses to be bound by laws other than Quebec's in commercial contracts such as Ontario law, New York law, or Delaware law, thereby undermining the use and development of Quebec civil law and the use of Quebec courts and attorneys. Such an outcome would have the unintended effect of weakening the influence of the French language on Quebec courts and diminishing the importance of Quebec legal professions, professionals, rather than enhancing. The Supreme Court of Canada has long recognized that the rule of law requires equality of all before the law and that the rule of law is a central organizing principle of the Canadian Constitution. To the contrary, Bill ninety-six institutizes inequalities in the application of the law based upon language. The language of contractual documents, as long as the parties understand the language in which the document is written, should be immaterial. A contract written in German in Quebec, signed in Quebec and performed in Quebec is currently just as valid before the law as a contract written in French. The requirement of all contracts be written in French with limited exceptions is a restriction on the will of the parties to consent to a contract in accordance with ordinary legal principles. As suggested above, adoption of the bill would dissuade companies located outside Quebec from entering into complex contractual arrangements or documents in Quebec due to the costs and delays and access to justice considerations, which would undermine the development of Quebec civil law and likely deprive Quebecers of goods and services available elsewhere. Will Quebec become a legal backwater? The obligation that all enterprises provide their services in French in the performance of their legal obligations, failing which there will be sanctions, will have an adverse effect on the provision of services and the common courtesy between service providers and service users. Essentially, corporations and enterprises in Quebec will be unable to conduct their businesses in English, whether that be via written or oral communications. This even includes plumbers and electricians. Quebec can be proud that it is a pioneer in Canadian human rights law. For instance, it was the first jurisdiction in Canada to enshrine privacy and its protection as a fundamental right, not only specifying it as a right in the Civil Code and the Quebec Charter, but also by creating its own privacy regime, including a commission and its formal apparatus to implement, oversee, and protect such rights. In democratic societies, such a right to privacy is and was always twinned with the most fundamental of restrictions on the state's security apparatus that is integral to the rule of law. That is, the prohibition against warrantless search or seizure, save in the most exceptional circumstances, even in the event of suspected criminal behavior. The rule of law requires generally that even the police require judicial authorization by way of a warrant to enter business establishments and search and seize only that which such warrant issued by a judge after review of at least minimally convincing evidence allows.
Sir Schlesinger, are you wrapping up?
Yes.
We have a full day. I'm sorry to cut you off, but your brief is, hopefully, will be available to everybody if they want to go into details. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Please go ahead. Wrap up, please. Thank you.
Bill ninety-six would give the inspection arm of the Office Québécoise de la langue française powers that public security officers do not possess, the right to enter and seize without warrant and without judicial review, either before or after. The office would be empowered on pain of civil and/or penal sanction to examine the contents of computers, tablets, telephones, and any other storage medium and to seize them or require copies of whatever information is contained therein, which in the inspector's estimation may be related to enforcement of the stringent new obligations imposing exemplary and/or exclusive use of French, even in lawyers' offices, where professional secrecy is supposed to govern. Such inspections can cause inspectors to access confidential information that has nothing to do with language and which cause economic damage. Furthermore, the inspector may be able to report this non-language-related information to other agencies of government, perhaps Revenue Quebec. The bill allows for anonymous complaints about either the use of French or someone's competency in French. This system of anonymous complaints allows for persons that may have personal grudges of one form or another to inform on their coworkers, neighbors, competitors, et cetera, without any way of verifying the truth of what may be baseless allegations that can lead to disastrous consequences. The bill encourages and protects every Quebecer to anonymously disclose alleged violations of the French language. In so doing, it enlarges the reach of the inspectors of the office. The Bill ninety-six introduces a form of secret denunciations and searches and seizures on neighbors and colleagues that has no place in a free and democratic society. By virtue of the legislative amendments in this bill, notably the rendering of Quebec and Canadian Charter rights inoperative, discrimination and harassment based upon insufficient command of language other than French would be institutionalized. However laudable the objection of the protection, the objective of the protection of the French language may be, the forfeiture of basic and fundamental rights can be and will affect all Quebecers, irrespective of their language of origin. Bill ninety-six and its provisions under the guise of language legislation needed to protect the French language erases or very, at the very least, substantially limits the liberties and freedoms of its residents, liberties and freedoms for which Quebec citizens of all origins have fought since the Quiet Revolution. Bill ninety-six makes natural justice and the rule of law subservient to the discretion of state agencies and their personnel and inspectors and is a legislative attempt to silence the courts. An independent judiciary is the means through which all persons have their rights protected and enforced. Without judicial review and judicial remedies, all rights are meaningless. As a result, it is incumbent upon those charged with protecting the very fabric of democracy to loudly protest Bill ninety-six in order to avoid irreversible harm to human rights. So that's it. I'd just like to give one blurb about the Lord Reading Law Society. You've already started that. But for more than seventy-three years, the Lord Reading Law Society has been a voluntary association dedicated to the furtherance of human rights and fundamental freedoms of Quebecers of all origins. The Law Society was created at a time where in our country and our province, many minorities did not enjoy the full equality which would have allowed them to flourish in accordance with their potential. With its history as being a collective voice of Jewish jurists in Quebec, the society- With its history as being a collective voice of Jewish jurors in Quebec, the society proudly counts jurors of diverse backgrounds among its membership. Thank you very much.
And I apologize again, Mr. Schlesinger, for cutting you off.
No problem. We're glad to field questions if there's time for that.
Is there any other commentary from any of the other members that are present from the Lord Reading Law Society?
We've had them on for questions.
Okay.
In different areas.
Well, thank you. I'll begin with Thomas. Thomas, do you have any questions?
I do. Thank you very much, Lenny, and thank you all for your presence today and for your compelling testimony. A question that I would like to ask, and we've heard a great deal of very intelligent legal commentary on Bill ninety-six and obviously for good reason. There's one comment that came up a couple of days ago from Nakaset with the Native Women's Shelter that I found particularly striking, and I'd like to put it to you. It was related to health services. And in her, in her very stark testimony, frankly, she said that, you know, the access to healthcare is quite literally a matter of life and death for members of her community. Again, having explored this from so many different directions legally, I'm especially interested in a point such as this where, notably for healthcare, if it is in fact a matter of life and death, how that may factor into the legal arguments that are being made against this law that goes beyond the constitutionality and really brings it down to the individuals who are supposed to be served by important services such as health.
We've mentioned this in our brief, but I would like to call on Eric Maldoff, who is the expert in this field and who is also presenting before you. Eric, are you there?
I guess not. So, in fact, we've said the same thing in our brief. If you cannot express yourself in your language when you're in crisis, when you're in a health problem, and if the people who are serving you cannot understand you, how are you supposed to get proper attention? It is absolutely fundamental for people to be able to express themselves in their language. I believe that I speak a pretty fair French, but I got to tell you, if I was suffering from a heart attack or and I was in a serious crisis condition, I would like to be able to express myself in my mother tongue, which happens to be English. And I think that that has to be something that is preserved and protected.
If I may give a practical example, two years ago, the Ontario government wanted to close down the only French language hospital in Ontario, Montfort Hospital. They went to court and the court found that the Constitution of Canada prevented the closure because of the unwritten principles in the Constitution respecting minority rights. It is likely that Bill ninety-six would set aside those unwritten principles. And therefore, in a Quebec context, it is likely that if they chose Quebec could close or restrict a non-Francaophone hospital. So here we have Ontario that fought, Francophone community fought for its one hospital. They succeeded, but the environment, the structure, the legal framework of Bill ninety-six would not allow us to use the same arguments in Quebec.
Hope that answers your question.
Thomas, did you have another question?
Yes, and you know, just as a follow-up to that and Mitra Bergman's comments, in the larger discussion around the bill, in the media in particular, there has also now been commentary from Francophones who say that they have gone to hospitals where they have been unable to get service in French. And so, sort of looking at this question from the other, another perspective, if you will, I'm also interested in your thoughts on, as we come through the complexity of this bill and this discussion, what obligations do English organizations have currently, quite apart from Bill ninety-six, but perhaps on the other side of Bill ninety-six in whatever form it takes in terms of offering services both in English and in French?
My understanding is that most institutions, all institutions, do offer their services in both official languages. I do not, I would like to see where there have been cases where Francophones are unable to be served in French in healthcare institutions.
And if I might add, all healthcare professionals must be licensed by their professional order. The order of doctors, the order of nurses, the order of physiotherapists, the order of whatever it is. You cannot be licensed in this province since nineteen seventy-seven if you cannot speak French. So it is difficult to imagine somebody being unable to get healthcare services in the French language. Whereas it is very easy to know that you cannot always get healthcare services everywhere in English.
Hello. Thank you very much. I will note, I cannot speak to the veracity of the claim that was made, nor will I defend it, but I greatly appreciate your response. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. I have a question, if you'll permit me. There's been a lot of testimony about the abuse of power that will be put in the hands of the Office de la langue française. In terms, and you did very much highlight that in your presentation, Metre Schlesinger, in terms of that they can go into any business and seize whatever equipment, business plans, even private cell phones, we were told, which is a totally, I was going to say legal way of proceeding if we go in terms of respecting the due process of law. And the fact that somebody can be anonymous in terms of making that complaint also. But there was also a testimony presented that businesses will also have to have a committee that they will have to set up and in which the Office de la langue française can be a member of that committee in that business to assure that the provisions of Bill ninety-six and of the French language legislation are adhered to. If this is all the way we're going, what are the avenues available then? Is the courts, going through the courts, we've always seen that Bill twenty-one, for example, has gone through the first level of judicial inspection, if I may call it that, and they have not struck down the law. Obviously, this will continue to go through the court system, but that may take years before we actually have a decision, which will be, I assume, and I'm hoping that perhaps, you know, rational minds will prevail and that we won't have to do the same thing in Bill ninety-six, but I suspect it will. So how do you see in terms of the future prospects of actually striking down this legislation in the court systems when Bill twenty-one, even though the judge said that it may be unconstitutional, the law stands?
Firstly, I see Eric has joined us, so in a moment after I answer your question, I'm going to ask him to comment on the healthcare issues, but Judge Blanchard said that the law is discriminatory, it's not good, it's terrible. However, his hands are tied because of the notwithstanding issues. I don't believe that there's going to be any difference in the other law. The notwithstanding clause was originally intended to be an emergency escape valve for something momentary that came up and that had to be dealt with in a way that there was no other way to overturn it. It was not envisaged at that time that the notwithstanding clause was going to be universally universally applied by every province seeking to avoid the application of human rights. That's the way it's happening. What is the answer? The answer is probably to be that the politicians have to step in and they have to say what human rights are. They call the human rights inalienable, but they're being alienated everywhere. So just trying to go on the current legal framework is very problematic.
The main point is that there is a significant problem in getting access to service and the question is, what's the liability? I've not studied that in depth at this point. We're still trying to get the rights sorted out. But I think the bottom line is this, professionals have a professional responsibility. And even under the suspended human rights, like Charter of Human Rights of Quebec, it's recognized people have to come to assistance when life, safety are involved. I don't think that at a civil level, professionals are going to be able to walk away from their professional responsibilities. And I will be surprised because I think there will be lawsuits for malpractice that are predicated on if the communication wasn't there and there was an unsuccessful outcome and they're related to each other or an uninformed consent. I find it very hard to believe that the government, that a court would say they're shielded, it's all right, language takes precedence over life and not yet.
I'm sorry, my dog was scratching at the door. I couldn't.
I get it. It's okay. He wants to be part of that discussion. He wants to be part of this discussion and that's fine.
And he only talks to me in French.
I have sort of a question that you may not be able, but that came up also during these hearings. There was a comment made that, perhaps, I mean, and it's part of what's also in the chat. I mean, trying to get the law overturned, be it Bill twenty-one or ninety-six, may be an impossible task because of notwithstanding clause. But maybe someone said, perhaps we have to change the Charter of Rights and Freedoms and go about it the other way. Any comments on that comment that was made by another jurist who came before us?
Through the Charter adoption, it was understood that Quebec Trudeau wanted to bring in a Charter of Rights. And the only way the provinces would agree to it was if they had a notwithstanding clause which allowed them to override the Charter. What the government did, they said, all right, we have to do it, we have no choice, but we're going to put a sunset clause on it, which means that it's only valid for five years. And then they would have to reenact the law. So if it was an unpopular law, in theory, a new government would come in or they would realize that they shouldn't do it again and it would expire. But five years is a long time to live with a suspension of your human rights.
And that only applies to the federal charter, not to the Quebec?
The Quebec Charter too. You can derogate.
Okay.
The notwithstanding clause is in the federal Charter and a derogation clause is in the Quebec Charter, but it runs the same thing.
Okay, I just wanted that clarification also. Thank you.
Just to be clear.
Yes.
The provincial charter has no drop-off date.
That's what I thought, but.
No, it's indefinite. The federal charter is five years.
If I may.
Yes.
I'd like to point out.
Mr. Gollum, yes.
I'd like to point out two things. Mr. Justice Blanchard, in his judgment, and there's about ten to fifteen pages where he excorciates the banishment or the sterilization, that's his term, not mine, of the rights instantiated in both the Quebec Charter and the federal Charter. What is interesting is he noted that ever since nineteen seventy-seven in Bill one oh one, while there was a period that the provincial government suspended the operation of the federal charter, the provincial charter was still applicable. And those rights could be used. Then there was a period in which one or the other, but not both, protected some legislation. Mr. Justice Blanchard pointed out that with respect to only two statutes, Bill twenty-one and one other, was there ever a blanket suspension of all the rights provided in both charters? So that's something that's very, very important. And Bill ninety-six does exactly what Bill twenty-one did. Second item, one presumes that our Quebec population, once they take account of how their rights will be affected, will hue and cry such that perhaps even within a majority, surely, if there are voices out there that clearly criticize the act, not in terms of its object, everyone understands and accepts the protection of the French language. It's the manner in which this is being done, which affects the human rights of all Quebecers. And yet, we don't see the hue and cry. Now, I admit, the law is huge, a hundred pages of legislation. Even for trained lawyers, it took great efforts of a lot of people to go through each amendment to see how the impact will happen. It's important for the Quebec population as a whole. I'd like to point out one last thing. And that is, the act that created the National Assembly has in its preamble an obligation on the National Assembly as the repository of the inalienable rights of le peuple du Québec, of which I say Anglophones are part and parcel. They have as an obligation to protect those inalienable rights against spoliation or negation. I suggest very strongly that if you look into Bill ninety-six, as we have, there are numerous instances where the National Assembly does not do what its preamble says it must do, rather, for admittedly good reasons or good objects, does exactly the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gollum. Yes, Michael, because I want to wrap up and get on to Eric and the access to social services.
The amending formula in the Canadian Constitution is so complex, convoluted and difficult. The likelihood of amending away the notwithstanding clause at the moment is Bill. We're stuck with it.
Thank you, Michael, and your testimony was just as just as informative. So I want to thank the Lord Reading Law Society for taking the time and coming today and again for your thoughtful and very incisive and very disturbing testimony to a certain extent about the consequences of the abrogation of our rights under Bill ninety-six. So thank you so much.
Our pleasure, dear. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our brief is available on our website.
Yes.
Of course, today.
And also the QCGN will make the briefs available also. I just want to confirm that. Thank you so much, Metre Dory Levine, Metre Frank Schlesinger, and of course, Michael Bergman, who has come twice before us and I appreciate all his comments, and also Metre Theodore Gollum. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you.
So far, we have heard, thank you. So far, as we said earlier, we've heard a few of our speakers who have raised the issue of access to health and social services. The Health and Social Services Committee of the Uh, the Health and Social Services Committee of the QCGN has been hard at work in recent weeks. They developed our response to the proposed changes to the regulations governing the Provincial Committee on Access to Health and Social Services before turning their attention to Bill ninety six. Uh, the committee is chaired by Eric Maldoff and its members are Gerald Cutting, Dr. Sandra De La Ronde, Sarah Saber Friedman, Marilyn Kaplov, Dr. David Morris, Howard Nadler and Richard Walling. I don't think that I need to introduce Eric uh much to our participants. He's very well known, has been very outspoken in terms of access to uh health and social services besides uh always been at the forefront or the fight for our rights in Quebec. And it'll be Eric Maldoff and Marilyn Kaplov who are presenting their brief. Eric, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yes. Um, and I hope Marilyn is there.
I'm here.
Great. So I'm, as mentioned, I'm the Chair of the Health and Social Services Committee of the QCGN. Just say a word or two about, I'm not a passing traveler in the health and social services sector. Over the time, I've been the Chair of the Montreal Children's Hospital, the Chair of the Executive of McGill University Health Center. I served on the National Forum on Health. I was the Vice Chair, which set up the Canadian Institutes for Health Research. I chaired the first Provincial Access Committee, Provincial Committee on Access to Health and Social Services in the English Language. And have continued to stay very involved to this day, Governor of the Jewish General Hospital and sit on a number of their committees. Marilyn will introduce herself in a moment, but I'm very pleased to be with Marilyn, with whom I've worked over many years. And who is genuinely an expert in the whole question of quality and risk in the health and social service system. And for us, that's what this discussion is really all about. Bill ninety six is a sweeping piece of legislation that would establish a new legal order in Quebec, which would have an important impact on many aspects of the life of Quebecers. We anticipate a serious adverse effect on the vitality and daily lives of English-speaking Quebecers. For this reason, it's a deep concern and input from our community and other affected organizations to the hearings of the Parliamentary Commission of the National Assembly on ninety six, uh, which has been severely restricted by a private invitation list is genuinely a deep concern and very disturbing. This limits all Quebecers from having a balanced, fulsome discussion and appreciation of the impact of this legislation, which effectively is attempting to impose a new projet de société, as we call it in Quebec, uh, without having a full discussion, without having a full exploration of the implications and without looking at the intended and unintended consequences of this potential legislation. The comité soutient l'importance d'assurer la pérennité et la vitalité de la langue française et la culture québécoise. Dont notre qualité fait partie. Le comité reconnaît également l'importance de le faire de manière inclusive qui bénéficie de l'appui de tous les Québécois, y compris les minorités dont les origines historiques, linguistiques, religieuses, culturelles, raciales sont différentes de celles de la majorité. Les Québécois de la langue anglaise ont apporté des contributions importantes depuis plus de deux cents ans au placement d'une Québec dynamique et moderne dans les domaines connus de comme l'enseignement supérieur, les sciences, la technologie, la santé, des affaires, la culture et plus encore. Cette diversité a enrichi le Québec et a renforcé le Québec. Le comité croit que le respect mutuel et l'accord de main sont nécessaires, précieux et cools avec l'histoire du Québec et l'import- et important pour son avenir. Dans ce contexte, l'accès aux services de santé, des services sociaux dans la langue anglaise, c'est une des plus, une est de la plus haute importance. Uh, with this, I, I would like to turn uh the screen over to Marilyn, who'll take a moment or two to introduce herself to speak to some of the key issues.
Thanks, Eric. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Bonjour to the monde. I was asked to present here this morning because I have a particular interest and expertise in issues relating to quality of care and patient safety. The majority of my career has been spent in developing, implementing and assessing programs of quality and safety for patients and clients. Working with the rest of the MUHC leadership team, I was able to develop and implement the first patient safety officer in all of Canada. I spent many years working with and coaching healthcare teams to ensure quality, improve safety and thereby support the concept of effectiveness and efficiency of treatment delivery. I was also a surveyor for Accreditation Canada and participated in about twenty five surveys across Canada, as well as doing some international work in this regard. So I come to this conversation with a background really steeped in an understanding of the issues that might impede safety for patients and ultimately undermine patient outcomes and healthcare efficiencies. And it's important to think about efficiencies as well. There's several perspectives related to assessments of quality and safety and risk. One is retrospective, in which the team or organization evaluates when something went wrong and how it can be prevented for the future. This other view is prospective, looking at possible events and understanding where the issues or potential gaps lie is a critical piece to avoid problems. And this is where I find Bill ninety six very problematic. Looking forward, it appears to me, having read the law or as much of it as I could understand, it appears to me that patients and clients who are already ill, often in severe emotional distress and requiring services, trying to find their way through a very complex medical and social service system really, really do not need another barrier of language issues. Fundamental to care and services, to good care and services, is the ability of a patient to understand and be understood, follow instructions, ask pertinent questions and understand the answer. I'd like to go to the research around this. I think we will all agree that we're living in a time when data and evidence are more important than ever. And the first piece I want to quote is a study done in two thousand and thirteen. The study is called Language Adaptation in Healthcare and Health Services Issues and Strategies. And the public, uh, the people that published this is the INSPE, the Institute Nationale de Santé Publique. I think we're all familiar with that group. Um, it is a very highly respected group and they've been instrumental in helping the government guide their COVID strategies. So I think this is a very well accepted group. In their study, and I quote, for twenty percent of Quebec's population whose mother tongue is not French, communication in this language can create difficulties when dealing with health and social service systems. The presence of linguistic barriers and available services can have major negative repercussions on the health of patients. And when sure that Anglophones and other linguistic minorities have access to services in their mother tongue, Quebec healthcare facilities may use bilingual or translated documents, hire bilingual employees, offer second language courses to health professionals or use interpretation services. And that's the INSPE. Another study published in two thousand and fifteen called The Impact of Language Barriers on Patient Safety and Quality. And this was a study produced by the Société Sainte-Haute-Canet and Health Canada. It's a little bit longer, but I think there's very important points. This critical review was limited in scope to evidence related to the impacts of language barriers on quality and safety in healthcare settings. Current evidence indicates that language barriers affect almost every aspect of health. Consistent and compelling international research highlights the impact of language barriers on participation in health promotion, delayed presentation for care, barriers to initial access for most health, most healthcare services, increased risk of misdiagnosis, poorer patient understanding of, of and adherence to prescribed treatments, lower patient satisfaction, increased risk of experiencing adverse events, poorer management of chronic disease. Language barriers often commonly result in a failure to obtain informed consent. There's many other references. The, the literature is replete with articles about language barriers. I won't continue. I think I brought up two that are very pertinent to our context here in Quebec. But I'd like to now go to standards. What are the standards around healthcare and language? Um, the first one I want to talk about is the Canadian Medical Protection Association, the NPA. And that both are the liability protectors of the, all doctors, including doctors in Quebec. Um, and they talk about good communication with patients as an essential element in care. Because they're putting out best practices to avoid malpractice. And they talk about language and good communication fostering patient understanding, increasing both patient and physician satisfaction, improving patient adherence to therapeutic plans, decreasing risk of medical adverse events and decreasing risk of complaint and legal action. One other standards organization I'd like to refer to, and that's because I was a surveyor for Accreditation Canada for many years. They're very clear in language being an important element. Standard one point eight in their two thousand and nineteen version, and I took for an example a community health service. There is a process to identify, report and try to remove barriers to access. Language barriers are amongst them. And they go on to say where barriers are beyond the control of the organization. The organization works with partners for the community to minimize them. Standard eight point six again verifies that the client and the family understand information provided about their care. Um, so as a surveyor, I remember that very often and we would talk to our patients, talk to our clients to see what, how, how that got around the language barriers, to see if they really understood what they were signing as informed consent. So research shows that language is critical. Standards operational show that language is critical. And now, how is all this going to play out in the field if Bill ninety six is implemented? What are the practicalities? And I'd like to examine this from both the patient perspective, client perspective, and then the caregiver perspective. Let's take a look at an English-speaking patient who's had an accident and is brought into the ER, choir Jean Fonte. He's confused, he's scared, he's barely able to communicate in any language, even his own. He's had this accident. In what language will this client, this patient speak to nine one one if he can barely speak at all? How will he talk to the Regent Fonte people and understand their questions? What happens in a busy emergency room? How will he legally sign an informed consent if it's written in a language he can't understand? How will he understand discharge instructions and know what to look for if he's written only in French? I'm not going to probe this particular issue more deeply, but please, everybody think about for a moment. A psychologist or social worker trying to understand and work with a family or an individual in major psychological distress with a language barrier. Now, that's the patient perspective. Let's look at the, at the caregiver perspective. The Presence Health and Social Service Act is very clear. Paragraph fifteen stipulates that English-speaking persons are entitled to read, receive health services and social services in the English language in keeping with the organizational structure. So we see the legal framework is there, the research is there, the standards are there, all under, uh, supporting the necessity of, of clear language and communication. And further, I would propose that goodwill is there. Having worked in both sectors, I worked in a French hospital for ten years, I worked in an English hospital, and I sit as a member of the Montreal Regional Access Committee. I can attest that most people want to offer services in the most efficient and effective manner. And if it means switching to English, they'll do so. However, under Bill ninety six, this is going to be prohibited or legally discouraged. You think English cannot be used in any systematic form. So let's go back to my patients in the ER. Is he going to be one of the lucky ones that the healthcare provider can say, it's a one-off, I'll use English for this patient? Or is he going to be one of the ones that the nurse or doctor can say, may I please have your English eligibility certificate before I can continue with you in English? And many of us, including me, predated these certificates. Maybe he's going to be the one that the healthcare worker will drop his voice and talk quietly in English, all the while looking around to make sure nobody notices. So I have enormous sympathy for a healthcare provider who's caught between a proverbial rock and a hard place. On one hand, the acts regarding health and social services, their professional codes, their inherent tendency to want to do well with their patients will lead them to want to speak English if necessary. On the other hand, Bill ninety six is written, will not permit this in any systematic fashion or discourages it. Staff will be both confused by and wary of potential negative consequences possible. If they exercise the option, option to speak English, they could be disciplined or have sanctions. However, the provision of service in English based on Bill ninety six will not shield our professional staff from the ethical consequences of choosing not to provide service in English. Complaints to institutions, professional orders and legal actions on, uh, based on malpractice or substantial outcomes would still be remedies that could be used by people who feel that they were not appropriately given this. Having worked in the healthcare system for so many years, I can strongly attest to the fact that people working in this system do not, I repeat, do not have the time or resources to start to add formal decision-making around language as another administrative task. I want to conclude by the last paragraph. I'm going back again to the Institute Nationale de Santé Publique of Quebec. And I quote, every code of ethics stipulates that health and social service workers abide by, stipulates they must do everything in their power to provide service of the highest possible quality. This means they must ensure that the level of mutual understanding they have with users does not interfere with quality of service. Health professionals should therefore not make, only make, every possible effort to speak the language of users, but, and most importantly, use every means available to ensure mutual understanding basis where there are not On a final note, I think we can all agree that we are presently dealing with multiple barriers in communication. My sister-in-law had to go to a hospital last evening. And she speaks French very well, but she just has a bit of a hearing problem. The struggle she had with the admissions office to communicate through masks, plastic barriers and her hearing, she said, we're truly worthy as a Monty Python. She's just trying to lower her ear to hear what the person's saying through the mask and then trying to understand the French on top of it. Please, let's not add to our present difficulty. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marilyn, and certainly your expertise and your knowledge of access to health and social services is, is very important addition to our discussions. Eric, is there anything else you would like to add?
Um, I, I saw something flash on the screen. Can we sort of point out what, what articles we're talking about or what?
Yes.
Um, so let me just take it through because I, I don't want people to have the impression that this is a bunch of English-speaking people who set their hair on fire. And because I understand, almost nobody in Quebec has read this law. And those who are applauding the loudest have certainly not read this law. Um, and that's one of the problems of not having public hearings that are open and inclusive. That being said, um, I want to go back so we understand the regime and cite some of the specific stuff that's in this legislation that gives rise to the angst that we're hearing about. Um, the access to services, the right to access to services is set out in the Health and Social Services Act. Um, and it is said that the services are as provided for in access programs. Access programs are to be developed by the regional health authorities, which are now the Centre Ente Grey post Barrett reform. They have to prepare an access program in every region of the province, specifying what services are available, what, where, and how. Under the Health and Social Services Act, section five oh eight, institutions that were recognized as bilingual under section twenty nine point one of Bill one oh one, the Charter, um, are included automatically in access programs as delivering all of their services in English. Most of those are concentrated in the Montreal region, as most of us know. But the English speaking community is not limited to the English, uh, to the uh, region of Montreal. The access programs once developed are reviewed by a local access committee, a local regional access committee, and they get the comment on it back to those who prepared it. It then goes from there to the provincial access committee, who is mandated by law under section five oh nine and five ten of the Health and Social Services Act to provide recommendations to the minister and advice to the minister on these programs. And what they're looking at is, does it provide for the complete range of services across the province? And within regions, if a region is unable to provide a service, does it, do they have a deal with another region to ensure the service is provided? The minister then approves it, once it's approved, it becomes a full-fledged right to that service. Um, now, what is this? This obviously depends on a whole lot of people being prepared to work in the direction of ensuring that English speaking Quebecers, who number about one point one million people in most pro, in, in five of ten provinces, enough to run a whole health and social service system of their own, that the goodwill of those people to prepare programs that will end up providing the services that are needed. I'm not going to go into why the services and languages are needed, I think that Marilyn has done a masterful job of explaining that. Once, now we get to Bill ten, Bill uh, ninety six. Um, first of all, it removes the rights of many people, many in the speaking Quebecers. And very simply, the way they've done this is to say that those who would be eligible, might be eligible, are ones who are eligible for English language instruction under the Education Act, Education Act of Quebec. That probably will knock out of the right somewhere between three and five hundred thousand English speaking Quebecers. The um, right itself, when it was adopted in nineteen eighty six and then updated in ninety one, was stated to be a right in favor of English speaking persons. There was a very deliberate debate about that and a deliberate decision to use that phrase, why? Because the determination was, language was really important to quality and safety of care. And there are some people who don't have the capacity and other people don't, are not comfortable receiving their health services, health and social services in French. And to that end, the system is designed to provide the best possible care uh, available. Um, the guide to the development of access programs uses the exact same criteria, English speaking persons. But now, Bill ninety six would limit that to an education-based criteria, which has nothing at all to do with the health status or needs of people seeking services from our health and social services network. So this is ideological and has nothing to do with health. Uh, furthermore, it's inoperable. Because how are we ever going to know who it is when somebody shows up at the emergency? Or somebody shows up in distress, or somebody has a mental breakdown, or whatever other type of crisis occurs? To say nothing of the fact that not everybody in Quebec has an eligibility certificate. And all the complexities that go with that. Now, um, then we get the exemplary use of French, and this is where the impediments show up. Uh, the exemplary use of French essentially says, the public service, including the health sector, uh, works exclusively in writing and orally in the French language. It does not create exceptions, it's very important to know that. What it does speak of is a limited number of options in favor of the public servant to decide whether, in those circumstances, he or she can provide you with the service in your language. Now that's remarkable, so the exception isn't to create the right or support the right. The exception is to the civil servant, and what's really unbelievable is where they have this, and they say there may be options, they go on to say, and they, they go on to say that um, the, when it is possible, the public servant is to use French. If at all possible, even in circumstances where there is the option to use another language. So there's an admonition not to exercise the option. And remember, they're in employment situation, and we have a confidential denunciation system under this law. And therefore, a coworker who doesn't like that person turns him in, and next thing you know, they're under investigation, et cetera. But that's in section thirteen point one and thirteen point two of the Act for those who are interested. There is an option under twenty two point two to provide services in English, in the case of health, public safety, and natural justice. Um, problem with that. There is already an option under Bill one oh one to provide posters, signs, and a bunch of information in the case of health. The Office d'Allemfrance, Québec was d'Allemfrance, has stepped in repeatedly and prohibited that to be done. To the point that when there was a heat exhaustion poster put out by the Ministry of Health and Social Services, sent unilingual to all institutions, our bilingual institutions asked for the English version, and they were told none available. They said, we want to print it ourselves, you're not allowed. So this is not a, a great situation when the option is put in people's hands. Now, the majority of people do want in the system, want to provide good health and social services, our experiences, people are forthcoming with this. But now you've got provisions where they're going to have to justify that decision every time they do it. Um, furthermore, when they do, or before they do, the minister under um, I said, the twenty nine fourteen and uh, twenty nine point fourteen and twenty nine point fifteen, a directive has to be developed for each institution that sets out the circumstances in which, when there is an option, it may be exercised. I have to identify all those circumstances in a written directive, which has to be sent to the new minister of the French language, who has to approve it, and then for known uh, reasons that I don't understand, it has to be published. So, everybody in the world is going to take a look at how many serves uh, situations are there where somebody can be served in English, and we know what that means right now. Furthermore, you need staff to do all of this, and they've imposed conditions there. It is prohibited, and it has been for a long time, to require knowledge of a language other than French in order to hold a position in our health system. Except if a knowledge is necessary for their duties, for the performance of their duties. Well, Bill uh, ninety six adds a little phrase that um, it has to be demonstrated by the employer, the institution, that's taken all reasonable means to avoid imposing that requirement, all reasonable means, section forty six, for people who want to look at the amendment Bill one oh one. And forty six point two lays out the conditions of what is means to take all reasonable means. You have to demonstrate that there is an actual need. By the way, the government used to record data on language of service or preferred language of service, they stopped that two decades ago. So there's no data available, but you have to demonstrate actual need for another language. Two, you have to de, demonstrate that that need can't be filled sufficiently by other people who happen to be in the institution, which is a nice subjective standard, and let's talk about having to look for the person, oh, it's coffee break or on a different department. And on top of that, even if you get through the first two conditions, then you have to demonstrate that you have restricted, to the maximum extent possible, the number of positions requiring such a knowledge. Uh, if that doesn't send a signal to administrators. Now, we'll add on top of that, the joy, that's all section forty six and forty six point one. Then we have the provision, I think it's section twenty, that says, any public institution that's produce an annual report, which is a public document, has to list in that public document uh, the number of physicians that require knowledge other than French. So, another sitting target for a political debate over the health and social service system with all sorts of interest groups playing their game. Um, the directive that the minister prepares, specifying the circumstances in which the option can be exercised, that also has to be published. And then we get into the issue of um, anonymous denunciations are possible. Investigations can then be launched. The CEOs of these institutions are liable for the enforcement of the law. In other words, it's not the courts, it's discipline internally. Um, and that leads to the question, in those, that kind of environment, what employee, what professional, what CEO of an institution is going to want to even bother to fill out that much paper, knowing it's going to be published, knowing he's going to end up in a, or she's going to end up in a debate with the OQLF and with the new minister of the French language, spending hours and hours justifying all of this. And on top of that, at risk of being found to have been too generous in making the services available or using English, and therefore in violation of the Act, where there's no objective standard on how to know that, except the minister's directive, which is completely discretionary. So, that is what this law does. Complete chill, knocks out with the criteria of English instruction, a whole chunk of people who are legitimately entitled to service. For bilingual institutions, those hiring criteria apply to them too. And they have to publish also in their annual report the number of positions that require knowledge other than French. So, that's the picture. Um, this is a very serious problem. And I think there's every reason for the community to be very concerned about this. The, in closing, I would say this, um, access to services. I should say it this way, uh, access to service in English has a long history. Recent scientific views have confirmed the importance of that. English speaking Quebecers have worked on and for this right for a long time. Bill ninety six would undermine it substantially, undermine the ability, substantially the ability and will of institutions and professionals to deliver services. By attempting to transform the health and social services network into an instrument of social integration, Bill ninety six would deprive hundreds of thousands of English speaking Quebecers of effective and safe services. Most vulnerable populations, elderly, chronically ill, uh, mental health problems, small communities will be particularly affected and live with an additional dimension of the alienation hardship. Taken together, Bill ninety six would represent an extraordinarily high degree of micro-management of day-to-day operations and functions and delivery of services by the health and social service network. They are vital to the well-being of English speaking Quebecers, who are entitled to receive delivery that's effective and safe. It is even more extraordinary that the minister of the French language and not the minister of health would be in control of outcomes of the health and social service system. And let that sink in, the minister of health doesn't account for the outcomes. Now it's the minister of the French language, get the last call on the language of service, which that gets into the whole quality and safety of service. It's completely inappropriate and improper that health and social service network would be distracted from its fundamental mission. Its entire effort should be dedicated and energy to delivering the best possible outcomes for all Quebecers. And instead, it's been taught, drawn into becoming a vehicle for social integration and other political agendas. Um, the system has to cope with so much, and COVID has demonstrated that. To impose this burden and have every individual question themselves as to what to do makes no sense at all. In our view, um, Bill, this bill is going to have a serious adverse effect. It is very unclear as to whether this will make a material difference in the future of the French language. Certainly when weighed against the adverse consequences that will result for people's health and security. Our inescapable conclusion and recommendation is that the provisions of Bill ninety six should not apply to the health and social services sector. All right, thank you for your time, we thank you for your time.
No, we thank you, Eric, and also Marilyn, for all the uh, hard work you've put into actually uh, very much informing us of how the system works and how it will not work if Bill ninety six is implemented. So, um, Thomas, I know your hand is up, but it's not necessary because you'll always be the one to ask the first question, so, go ahead.
Thank you, Alani, uh, Eric and Marilyn, thank you so very much for this uh, testimony and for sharing your vast experience, your vast knowledge. Um, and we've been, we've been talking about just how, how complex Bill ninety six is, to then hear how it then applies to one of our most complex systems, which is the healthcare system. Uh, it's, it's, it's a big, it's a tall order, and, and I, I think that you've done a, just a wonderful uh, job at pointing to so many of those complexities. Um, I, I have a question uh, for you Marilyn, and it circles back to the discussion you were having on, on research and on, on international cases in particular. And the, I, I'm curious to know, in, in the research that you, that you've done, that you've read, if there are examples of other jurisdictions around the world where there are multiple languages um, being spoken, and that, that might serve as an example of, of how, how it can be done right, how it can be done best, how it can be done better, or whichever, whichever framing you might, uh, you, you might have.
Um, there are multiple examples, I really tried to stay away from them because I really felt it's important to focus on here in Quebec, our context, which is a little bit different than other places. Um, there are, and, and like everything else, there is varying solutions. Uh, Quebec, the INFP has made very specific uh, suggestions, which I had read out. Uh, other places, uh, there was a, a global, a meta-analysis of a bunch of studies. And one of the concerns was, and this really doesn't apply somewhat here in Quebec, because we have a significant number of Anglophones. But in places where there's smaller minority, um, the possibility of using, and there's really no capacity for, for easy translation in some of the outer areas. They were talking about using something as basic as Google Translate. But whatever research I've looked at, uh, there is always the underlying theme of, we have to find ways to deal with this. And it seems to me in Quebec, where we're already dealing with it, and then to basically undeal with it and put us back at, at stage uh, and, and take away rights that we presently have, is, is really rather retrogressive, and it's going to put us, I mean, are we going to end up having to use Google Translate? I mean, it's really uh, quite remarkable that we're going in this direction.
Thank you so much. Oh, Eric.
We have our own history. Um, and it is a rather unique one. And despite rough patches over the course of the last uh, two hundred and fifty years, fundamentally, we've built a pretty interesting, dynamic, successful society. Why we would be having a debate about language and healthcare is beyond me. Because it's simply, in all my involvements, this has not been a major issue. The major issue that we've had to deal with was, with the acknowledgement of the right, how do we work out access programs that are workable? And beyond that, people get along, people have made it work, the quality of our care is pretty good. Um, we've done a pretty good job with COVID, I would even mention though, at the beginning, the language issue got in the way of us getting public health information to the English speaking community. And we went three weeks with public health information going out only in French to every door in the province. While this thing was spreading like wildfire, they finally figured out how they could get it to all the English speaking doors also. But with this bill, they would not find that loophole this time. Uh, but again, I come Uh, but again, I come back to, I'm not sure, we've invented models and we've invented them well. And they've been based on goodwill and a desire for this to be a special and inclusive place.
Thank you both. And just to, I, I, I wanted to put this in the form of a question. I don't think we have the answer to this question yet. So just I'll, I'll underline it as something that really struck me in your testimony. And it is the intersection of the bill or the, the uh bill ninety six. And also just how it works on the ground with the principle of doing no harm. And whether that be the Hippocratic oath, whether it be codes of ethics. Um, again, I don't think we have an answer to that. If either of you had a, had any further comments on it, I'd be interested to hear it. But it is something that I, I personally will be watching um over the, the, the coming discussion on the bill.
My answer is that this bill, as I said earlier, I don't think most people have read. But I think when they start to read this. Professional corporations like the College of Physicians and others, the insurers, uh, they're going to get in there and say, well, how's this supposed to work? Um, because this is absolutely strange when you decide to defy, use the health system as means of social integration as a primary goal put above the delivery of health and social services. Now, if that's the Quebec, the Quebecers are going to sign off, sign on to. Where, you know, security, the person, the right to health, all of that goes out the window. And as long as you don't speak French and the uh, as Molière would, you're in uh, you're out of luck on all the basic things. I, I just think this debate has to happen. And people are going to realize that you can't be asking people to abandon their professional responsibilities in favor of other political objectives. But, you know, we're going to see. That's why I think it's very important that you and others have taken the time to participate in this. And to enable some area of the discussion. This could be a very rational discussion leading to a better Quebec.
We certainly hope so, Eric. Thomas, you have another question because there's a few questions in the chat. I don't know, Eric, if you have access to the, to the chat, you might want to look at uh about confidentiality. Uh, and other issues that uh may come up if a third party is involved in uh adjudicating between the patient and the uh, and the social service required.
There, there's a major problem of confidentiality under this law and it's written right into it. And that is that on the basis of anonymous complaint. The Office de Quebecois de l'Anfonse says has the power to go in and search and seize computers, electronic information and documents and all of that. Um, and the only thing that is protected by this bill. Not surprisingly, maybe the authors are worried and that they may need it is solicitor client lawyer client privilege. But the confidentiality of patient files, it goes out the window of that. And I think that's a deep concern. But again, it's another right that's been suspended by the notwithstanding clause, blanket use thereof. Uh, for both charters. Uh, but I think it's a very serious concern. And again, it raises the question of whether the professional uh, or orders.
Orders.
Yeah, whether they are going to be able to live with that kind of provision. I can't imagine that they're going to say, we don't feel, we have a job responsibly to protect our, our patients confidential files.
Eric, you, you raised an issue that had been raised with, by a seniors uh group that came before us. And they felt very strongly that there should be an exemption made in the legislation specifically for seniors in care or even seniors at large. Um, do you want to address this? You did sort of touch upon it in your presentation, but would you like to make further comments? About i- is it, is it really realistic that the Quebec government will accept uh blanket uh exemption from the law in terms of access to uh health and social services for seniors? As we, we heard compelling testimony about somebody who has dementia and of course they, usually they revert back to their mother tongue. A lot, often it isn't even English or French. It is other languages, like in the case of my parents, it would be Greek that they would obviously revert back to. Uh, they'd be, and we know that recently uh, there's been, there is an inquiry and there's been a lot of concern on how the government has handled also uh, long term care facilities and during the pandemic. So is there an compelling uh argument to be made? That we have to protect the most vulnerable in our society, which is the seniors. By uh asking uh the government to exempt them. I know it's difficult to put one group, but I'm going to choose that group for the moment. Uh, one group uh to be exempted from the um from the bill itself, from the impact of the bill. Let's put it that way too.
Um, now I'm speaking personally, you won't find me advocating for that kind of a measure. Because i- it becomes too easy a way out for the government. This bill is fundamentally flawed in terms of ensuring safe and effective healthcare across the board is fundamental. So you can think of children, you can think of people in crisis, you can think of emergency rooms. You can think of the need for informed consent. The need to have post operative instructions that are pre op and post op instructions that the patient can understand, the need to have a prescription, a drug prescription use instructions that the patient can understand. So to, you know, sort of say, well, let's take this most compelling example and the government say, well, listen, we listen. Well, all we're going to have is a huge problem across the board. With one other problem may be solved and the government parading around as a very, very open democratic uh government. I, I just don't see it. I think that this has to be faced head on. It doesn't make sense in any sector. And uh, mental health. How the heck are the Douglas hospitals, a bilingual uh, mental health institution? Supposed to deal with its patients.
I'd also like to point.
Marilyn, yes, go ahead.
In the case of uh dementia, there's a lot of people that aren't senile that have dementia. So does the cutoff become a senior with dementia? What about the younger ones, ones in their fifties that have pre seen all dementia?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, any other question, Thomas? I don't know what's happening in the chat. I'm trying to.
Yeah, I just want to answer one thing in the chat. Somebody said uh that Health Canada stepped in for uh deliver the uh, the health information on the pandemic. That's not right. It was delivered by the government of Quebec. And Health Canada does not have jurisdiction to run the healthcare system in Quebec. We really have to deal with the Quebec government straight up on this.
Yes. Uh, Thomas?
Uh, simply to say, thanks so much. I, I have learned a great deal and, and
Yes.
This is just a wonderful exploration of some of the, some new corners of the bill. And so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Eric. And Marilyn, thank you so much for all your work. Uh, Eric, um, I would like to take a, a three or four minute pause. Yes, Eric, sorry.
I wanted to thank you for your time. I know you've put in a lot on this, Thomas, also. And hopefully one day when we get out of COVID jail, we'll see each other.
I appreciate it, Eric, and I look forward to that, to, to that, of course. Uh, but I also look forward to this bill being fundamentally scrapped, but I'm going to, that's my opinion, not not the opinion of the QCGN, but I think that's a part of what you said today, that it is fundamentally flawed. And uh, hopefully they can go back to the drawing board, the government. That's what we hopefully are going to um ask for or uh advocate also. But I thank you so much because I also learned a, a great deal. Um, we are running ahead of time, but maybe I'll take the next speaker and then we'll have a break. Um, so um, thank you, Eric and Marilyn. And I don't know if Maria is on at the moment. I'm looking for her. There she is. So Wednesday, we heard from the Canadian Council of Muslim Women. Uh, and today it is the Montreal Council of Women. Uh, I would also uh point out that the provincial council of women of Quebec have submitted a brief, but were unable to be here today. For more than a century, the Montreal Council of Women has been focusing on empowering all women to work together uh towards improving the quality of life for all women, families and society as a whole, while advocating for improvements in social services. And it is my pleasure today to introduce a very good friend of mine and uh uh, someone who I respect and have had over the years worked with on different issues. So uh, Maria, who is presently the Concordia professor and a community activist and the vice president of the Montreal Council of Women for Government Relations. Maria, welcome.
Thank you very much, Lenny, and thanks to all of you and to the QCGN in particular. Um, I'm not going to spend my time repeating so much of what we all have a consensus about. Um, it should not surprise us to understand that bill ninety six is an excellent example of what systemic discrimination is all about. Something that the Quebec government has a difficult time imagining or understanding what systemic discrimination is. But make no mistake about it, bill ninety six is a, is, is a form of systemic discrimination towards English speaking Quebecers. I do not use mother tongue. Um, it's one of the things that bothers me about ninety six is that a total professional disregard for the um aggregate statistical relevance of how professionally you gather data. We are talking here about English speaking. You know, Quebecers, but no, who are these Quebecers? The criteria for the data collection should be, what is the language that you speak at home? What is the language that you speak of most often? Not mother tongue. My mother tongue is Italian. So how do I figure into all this aggregate data? So as a professor and academic, I really uh was struck by that inconsistency. And of course, um, as all of you have done so well. And I do, I'm very impressed with Frank Shinzelers and Lord Writing Society. And Marilyn Caplow, in particular, Eric Maldoff, who outlined exactly what the problems are with access to justice. What we have here, you know, the cost of translations, the fines, the intrusion, the ignor of evidence, you know, all of that. That what is really bad about bill ninety six for all of us is that government acts as judge and jury. That's what government does, not the courts. It's government, not some, some neutral or, or, you know, arms length distance between the judiciary and government policy. No, it's the government. With bill ninety six, it is both the judge and the jury and just everything. Frankly, I don't see the difference between that and the Inquisition and Severna Rona. And how bills ninety six will be operating. Um, the increased surveillance, for example, of government, I think somebody pointed out, I think it was Frank. Or Eric, I don't know, one of the two, um, where we can just simply tell on our neighbors or maybe tell on our coworkers who are, you know, we're not satisfied with, with um how they speak French, or maybe they don't like us as English speaking Quebecers. Um, and as well, the thing that I resent, so I'm giving a different, a different twist to this presentation in, in comparison to all others. So, you know, rest assured that the Montreal Council of Women supports exactly, and in our brief reflects it, the concerns raised. Another issue that really disturbs me is the fear mongering. Bill ninety six is going to work. Because they've raised the fear of all other Quebecers. Um, to the idea that they are disappearing or that the French language is disappearing. And somehow it's our responsibility for this occurrence. Not demographics, not because they're losing population, not because of the globalization of la lingua franca is English. That's not my fault. When NATO meets, they speak in English. Um, but the fear mongering that, that, that it's caused. Rather than a celebration of our diversity, rather than empowering. You know, and including as many people as possible. It sort of abrogates the administration of justice, regardless of the language being spoken by anyone. The other thing I want to say is that the Montreal Council of Women is a great organization that very few people know anything about. First of all, we're the oldest organization in Canada. A women's organization. Formulated by an act of uh council by the federal government for us to exist. Furthermore, we're not just isolated as a group, we have incorporated as a federated groups. Thirty different federated groups that are English speaking women's organizations. So that we represent quite an impressive constituency of women. And bill ninety six has an incredible impact on women. So let me explain how. Because I think that that's important. Look at employment equity. How is bill ninety six going to ensure that we can have jobs in the public civil service or jobs anywhere? For English speaking women. I draw your attention to the health services. The health professionals. We are at a state where nurses are leaving. We're at a crisis that we don't have enough people to take care of our health services as is. But bill ninety six will do away with offering equal opportunities for employment for English speaking women. Um, and all other racialized groups, if the COVID has taught us anything, and that's the evidence before our eyes, we are witnesses, live witnesses to the needs that COVID um, and the COVID pandemic has revealed to us. The senior citizens. Um, what is going to happen to the English civil, you know, senior citizens in their, in their, in their, you know, in their seniors homes? In their hospitals? Who's going to serve them? Right? And their health needs. So there are plenty of examples um of how employment equity and the discrimination will continue in terms of our employment possibilities. And I may add, not just women, but all the English speaking community in terms of access. Equal opportunity in the provincial government. Um, and the other thing I'd also like to say is that um, you know, getting back to the question of data before I forget, is that um ignoring how to aggregate data is a bit like those people we've learned about that ignore the advice of health professionals during this COVID. Like, oh, well, that's not really an issue. When in fact, it's a very, very serious issue to consider the inclusivity of everyone that will be affected. Um, the other thing I'd, I'd like to uh just end at because I'm open to taking questions. I'm not interested in going over, over and over and over again, where the consensus already lies. But I do want to draw on something that's very, very sad and meaningful, at least to me. There was a time in this province at the very outset of the whole discussion and rock and roll about constitutional rights, language rights, Quebec rights, bill one oh one, bill twenty two, on and on and on. There's a litany. Okay, where at one time Quebecers believed in the policy autant de façon d'être québécois. And what is very, very sad is that bill ninety six is an abrogation of that inclusivity and that policy that was once held in high regard by many Quebec nationalists. And I'd like to end on that. And, and as again, I'd like to thank in particularly Marilyn Caplow and her analysis of health services and what that means because ultimately we want our fair share of the services that we are taxpayers for. I mean, after all, you know, what is the purpose of the exercise in contributing to a society if we're not included? to a society if we're not included in spite of our contributions? So I'll leave it at that. It's a very different twist. These are my own comments that complement, I hope, all of your own concerns and certainly complements where the Montreal Council of Women proudly stands defending our rights.
Thank you, Maria, and I know firsthand, having served on the Montreal Council of Women, of the work that the Montreal Council does to inform and empower women and, and especially in areas of concern to women like pay equity and access to social services. Thomas, did you have a question?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Elaine. And Maria, thank you so much for, for your testimony. The, I, I find it interesting that you're at this late stage in these hearings, you, you're pointing back to some of the things we have heard. Notably, I think it's a testament to how you've been following and I, and I do thank you for, for, for that and for being an active participant in the audience as well. That said, I do believe you've raised a couple of points that we have not explored to this extent and, and, and that's what I'd like to focus on for the questions. What I, I found especially interesting that you raised the point about data. And these days, I feel as though there's, there's more data available than there ever has been in the past. And, you know, quite apart from the census, it seems as though we're giving away personal information to, to governments and companies on a daily basis. So given that we have so much data out there about us, I, I'm curious what the barriers are. Is this a question of, of governments not sharing data? Or, or for example, a system like the healthcare system not capturing it in an efficient way? Is it a question of interpretation? Is it both? I, I'd like to explore that all the further.
I'm so glad you asked me that, but before answering your question, you should be interested to know that New Zealand is one of the countries you can look at to see how they have merged, being the only country in the world, as far as I'm concerned, that I know of, that is both bilingual and bicultural. So when you go to the New Zealand website, you will see both languages, English and Maori, being promoted at all times. And they're getting better with their services, by the way. I focused on New Zealand because of that unique legal constitutional status they have of being both bilingual and bicultural. And in Canada, we are bilingual because we have so much diversity that we, we, and though we're changing with indigenous people in that. The question about data is, is simple. Only because, Thomas, I've been quite involved with the issues involving police and, and, and minority groups, English and racialized communities, and particularly the blacks, the Asians, the Muslims. And that is this, they're not collecting disaggregated data. That's very important. Like if you go to Statistics Canada, never mind Quebec or the Montreal Police Department or any of the other social government agencies in Quebec, they don't collect it. They don't amalgamate. So when we say there are ten thousand people who have died in senior citizen homes, who are they? Are they women? Are they male? Are they English? Are they French? Are they blacks? Are they indigenous? The disaggregated data is not collected, and I'll tell you why. To, to collect that disaggregated data would mean you'd have to respond. You'd mean, it means you'd have to have a game plan, of which the police, for example, in Montreal has none. As good meaning that their poetic rhetoric may sound that we care about eight, but in, in actual fact, very little has changed. The same with employment equity for that matter. And the English-speaking community in the public service, the data is not there. It's, and it's not given annually. That's another thing, is that it's one thing to collect data, but how is that released? And why isn't it being released? I'm curious to know. You know, who is using our services? Who is in need of our services? Who is being discriminated? We have no clear data on that. We just have simply say, English-speaking community or English-speaking Quebecs. But we don't know the, the, all the other variables and intersectionality of that identities of people. How many gays are going to be affected by Bill 96? I know it sounds ludicrous to even suggest this with all the serious concerns legally that Bill 96 provides us. But the fact remains is that I do want to know, as, as the Vice President of Government Services for the Montreal Council of Women, I am interested in knowing, how will women be impacted by this? We're going to have less jobs. That's what's going to amount to. You know, not just the question of services, we're going to have less jobs. And that's going to cause a drain, just like Bill 101 caused a drain. You know, and the first referendum caused a drain. So I don't know if that answers your question, Thomas. It's a very interesting, but people who don't provide data are hiding something or don't want to provide the information because then it creates expectations that they have no intention of needing. I'm sorry to be so cynical. I'm not normally cynical, I'm a fighter. But I'm, I'm very not helpful with seeing something like Bill 96 is very, very disheartening, to say the least.
If I may ask a follow-up on the data question. I know that there's been a lot of work done on this by Human Rights Commissions across the country. And in some cases, it's not a question of the data not existing. So, which is to say, the questions are being asked, but then the data is not being shared. In Quebec, in the case of Quebec and, and the examples that come to your mind, is it a question of those questions not being asked? Which language, which gender, for example? Or is it a question of sharing the information? Because if the information does exist, at least there's a chance that it could be shared at some point.
Now, just to complicate our lives about the sharing, even if it was being shared, what is being shared? Here's the problem, consider the following, which you should be aware of why this vaccine passport for all of Canada is becoming a nightmare. Every province has their own way of sharing their own data and collecting data. You don't think for one minute that Alberta collects data provincially, let's just deal with provinces, in the same way that Quebec collects data or Ontario. Consider that in rural communities, sometimes data is not available. You know, it's just not available because the, the infrastructure, there's no infrastructure to support it. And then what systems are we going to use? I mean, how do we communicate with each other? Across Canada and all these provincial premiers and provinces? And how does Canada communicate with Quebec and Quebec communicate with us with regards to data? Very interesting question. I want to know, is Fort Timo collecting data in the same manner that, that the island of Montreal is? See, that's another, another wrinkle, another problem that's, that's come out with for academics and data and statisticians out of COVID. That that's become very clear that, you know, and, and then, and then you're assuming that the data will be given to the, to the right provincial authority. Unlike, for example, Ontario, just as an example, they're still using fax machines. You know, so, so, I mean, are we going to get that data? Who's collecting it and the government is it collected in the same way? There has to be a uniformity and an understanding. And that understanding is not political. That understanding is professional. As I, my example earlier, Thomas, was that we don't tell a health professional, you know, or, or doctors or science, what, what it means when we have a virus, let alone a global one. We don't deign to report to them what, what is the scientific consequences of having a global pandemic with a virus that's unknown. And, and ignoring data is like ignoring their advice. It's the same thing, because we're dealing with professional scientific information. Just like a doctor would give you information on viruses, just like a lawyer would give you information on, on the draconian methods of Bill 96. So I wanted to give a different slack to perhaps some of the presentations you've already heard to focus on some serious problems, many of which the QCNN has already, has already brought forward. But I wanted to emphasize that and for the target populations such as women, such as the homeless, you know, such as senior citizens, such as ethnic communities, such as the racialized community, the indigenous populations who don't have to die in a hospital every time they ask help in English and are left to die, which is what happened during COVID. That's another example. And I do want to reinforce that I'm very, very sad and heartbroken that there are many ways to be a Quebecer, autant de façon d'être québécois, and why that policy was abandoned. Barre du Parti Québécois and the nationalists is beyond me because at least it celebrated what brings us together rather than, and, and the diverse ways, autant de façon, many ways that we can contribute. And that is the most earth-shattering disappointment that I can possibly think of after all the arguments and presentations are done. I hope Francois Legault is listening to this because after all, he joined politics precisely under the belief that there are many ways we can contribute and be Quebecers.
Elaine, may I ask one more question?
Yes, yes, we have time. I'm just going to take a break right after Maria to give everybody a break. Go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you so much. The, the other question I do want to ask Maria is relating to employment. And, and I think you've made some very compelling points. The pandemic and the context of the pandemic has demonstrated to us once again that in times of crisis and in, for all of the crises around employment, particularly over the last couple of years. Of course, it is women and racialized women in particular who are disproportionately affected. Looking at, at the lens of the bill and the characterization you, you put forth about the, the challenges that this adds, I, I, I'm interested in just you giving a, a picture of, of where, you know, the pandemic coupled with the timing of this bill and what comes in the years ahead, what, what the situation may be like for, for women in particular?
Well, I'm, I'm glad you asked that question because I did work on the Board of Alliance Quebec at one time in government relations. And I was constantly hounding Daniel Johnson for his lack of interest in, in employment equity for the English-speaking community. But I want to add something else to your question. It's not just the English-speaking community that suffers. It's Francophone young people that are suffering because denying them access to English, English education in particular, then there is no means by a young man or a young woman raised in Pointe au Pic to ever become president of IBM or to become vital economically speaking without at least having access to languages, which is, which is awful. And, and Quebec has misunderstood the ethno-cultural communities in terms of language. Every immigrant I've ever met and worked with wants their children to learn as many languages as possible. It's not complicated. It's not to undermine the importance of French or English or English or Spanish or whatever, but it's only to reinforce the possibilities in terms of employment, business and the opportunities for growth that a diversity of languages will provide. So employment equity, Thomas, is, is, is not going to be, you know, is not being looked at in, in Bill 96 in terms of what it will ultimately mean, mean in terms of economic survival and gaining a livelihood. Gaining a livelihood, that's also in the Charter, the Canadian Charter. The right to gain a livelihood anywhere in Canada, that's also being denied to us. So I don't know if that answers, there's a lot of information on, on employment equity and also pay equity, but employment equity in particular. Our numbers are not rising. All we are always told is they don't apply. Women don't apply, blacks don't apply, the English don't apply. That's what we're told by government, that's why we don't have that many. Well, why would anyone apply to be included in a society or a group of people that, where they're not wanted? Why would a black apply? Why would an English-speaking person even apply? What is being done to encourage and to include and to demonstrate that the Quebec government, that our government cares about all its citizens, not just some of its citizens, rather than fear mongering?
Thank you so much, Thomas.
Thank you very much, Maria. That's all for me.
Is that okay, Thomas?
It's more than okay, I think. I think it's more, you, you've shown once more your, your passion and depth knowledge, Maria, of issues that are dear to your heart and that you have fought for in our society. So we're very, very pleased that you were able to make it. I do want to point out, because it was in the chat and you're not able to see the chat, that Bill 21, when it came out, there was a request made by the UN apparently to provide data to them. And that I'm told by someone on the chat line, I think it's Sandra, and I apologize if I got it wrong, I, I can look it up, that the Legault government never provided that information to the UN. So very disturbing. And there was also, just to remind some of the participants, and perhaps you're aware of it, Marie, Jack Jadwab actually did a study whether the French language was actually in danger in Quebec. There is an issue, of course, on the island of Montreal, but those are very important studies which are being put forward. And also I can say that QCGN, we base our information on research and data. This is not figures that we figure out of the air, that we actually do in-depth research and we do provide data to back up the, whatever issue we're dealing with. So I want to put that on the record also. Yes, go ahead, Maria, because I want to take a little break.
I, I just, I just want to point out, Elaine, that Jack Jadwab's study is really phenomenal and it's very, very interesting as to why the French language is disappearing. One of the most beautiful languages in the world, n'est-ce pas, mais oui, certain, c'est la plus belle langue au Canada. We agree, but the reasons why it's disappearing has nothing to do with any of us. There are reasons why the French language is disappearing and minority languages elsewhere. You know, there were over seven thousand minority languages in China. They're now down to a thousand. You see, so language and why it disappears and, and how it's promoted is a very interesting question. But to cast blame on a group of people as to why it disappears, I mean, I don't want to be rude, but it reminds me of the 1930s in Europe where it's very facile to cast blame on the ills that a society is experiencing or believes is experiencing on groups of people, minorities, blacks, Jews, Muslims, whatever. And we're in a very, very dangerous, in Canada for other reasons, not just in Quebec, of really having polarized the political arguments against other people. It's very, it's very, very disturbing, actually. And it's most disturbing here. Maybe perhaps Quebec has just simply taken advantage of this, I don't know. What other thing I want to say before I leave, and this is the question with the international that you raised, Elaine, is that I find it incredulous that, that the nationalists want to promote the Francophony and whenever possible, their intervention international speaking, you know, in, in, in various circles, you know, politically and otherwise in terms of policy development. Because obviously, the recognition internationally of nationalists is, is a reaffirming of their desire, possibly to separate, possibly to, to, to advance the French language in their way. But under no circumstances with Bill 96 do we see them speaking to the international community. Gee, I wonder what Amnesty International would have to say about all of this, you know? I mean, for all the effort they make and arguing all, immigration should follow under our domain. You know, this is our territory. We're the only ones that can speak internationally on behalf of Quebec. Well, where are they speaking internationally about Bill 96?
Thank you, Maria. Thank you. It's been a long morning and I do want to take a break, but I appreciate so much you taking the time and for your very, very in-depth analysis and bringing to us another way of looking at all this legislation, especially with the data. So thank you, Maria.
If anyone wants to get ahold of me, there's Elaine and there's, of course, the Montreal Council of Women.
Of Women.
Yes, Dolly Dulster is our president and she'd be more than eager to provide you with additional information. I have to leave for another meeting. But it's been a pleasure, the pleasure was all mine. Thank you very much to all.
Yes, I should thank Dolly and Penny Ranklin, also the former president, for working with you. And next up are two members of the Quebec Community Groups Network Board. Dr. Clarence Bain of the Black Community Resource Center. And Alex Adrian of the Quebec Board of Black Educators. Both of these gentlemen are pillars of Montreal's black community and I've had over the years had worked and known Dr. Clarence Bain. And we look forward to sharing, for them sharing their insights.
Clarence, à toi l'honneur.
You want me, you want me to start?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so thanks for the invitation. I'm a secret UN and I, I know that the BCRC is an organization that was contacted, but in this matter, no, a single organization in the black community. It is on lies for just one point of view to be given, but since the BCRC is the administrative arm of the, an agency called the Black Community Forum. We have been following up over the, the years of this, the existence of this organization. How different organizations in the, in the black community respond and think on. And then there's a diversity of feelings here, but it all comes on to one situation as you will see in the end. That we are disturbed and in some cases actually in a panic about where things have gone at this point. We are very uncertain as to what strategy is going to be the best and maximize the situation of the black community in the Canadian and Quebec landscapes. The Black Community Forum consists of about 14 black independent agencies that work together to make a collective representation of the needs of the black peoples of Montreal. It promotes their freedoms, rights and economic advancement. The discussions between the members of the group and the research conducted by the Knowledge Hub of the Black Community Resource Center. Make the point that those freedoms are becoming increasingly more difficult to protect in Quebec. Even among some sectors of privileged bands. It is particularly so in Quebec because there is of the restriction those rights. Excuse me. The restriction those rights. Of those rights where the Quebecois government and the support of those restrictions by revisions of Bill 101 is so, and, and, and many of the articles of the Bill 96, for instance, the proposed revision and updating of, 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 of the Charter. Many of the articles are so exclusive in terms of those invited to make presentations during the debate on the bill. And that in terms detailed in the new proposed bill, it seems to many of us blacks. That Quebec and mainstream English speaking Canada are still emerging from the colonial structures of the race superiority doctrines that justified the transatlantic slave trade. And the exclusion of blacks from equal partnership in the creation of Americas, of the Americas. Some black leaders in the forum, for instance, as well as outside of the forum, state clearly that they have no hope. That effective change in the unacceptably slow pace of the movement towards equal rights for blacks and other visible and indigenous peoples can be accomplished by working with the governments of Canada and its provinces. Some of them strongly suggest that it is a, quote, waste of time even entertaining discussions with any Canadian government on these matters. When questioned about the reasons for such conclusions, they point to the tradition in the provinces and in Canada of promises and the failure to make any reasonable progress with those promises. They argue that the so-called constitutional division of powers, 1806, 1807 agreements. Give whites the right to exercise that power regionally and to just maintain white states. Enough to stand and close, get Quebec, Quebecois, more precisely, rights and the power to exercise those rights. Even using them in Quebec to discriminate against and assimilate persons of non-French ancestral biologies and heritage. Bill 101, also, the Bill 96 introduces changes that have frightening implications. Particularly so because they are introduced in a way that denies citizens the right to use the law to challenge their, these propositions. Even more frightening is the fact that it has given the legal right and moral responsibility to citizens to report persons not acting as required by the, by, by the bill. To function in a way that seemingly seem to require to, to, to strengthen the French language and culture. Some argue that this is very reminiscent of practices of Nazism used in the early stages before the destruction of the Jews into, in Germany. Many aspects of the proposed Bill 96 are grossly assimilationist. And provide a cover for the practice of systemic discrimination and anti-black religious, Muslim and indigenous racism. When questioned, those raising the questions are criticized and belittled by party politicians for offending Quebecers. Or using in their so-called federal elections period methods of criticism of Quebec's excessiveness by raising, quote, ill-advised and ill-informed debate questions that anger Quebecers and cause them to support the excesses of nationalists and other persons. We are told that slavery was abolished in 1863. But many of us believe that it is more a fact that this form slavery of, of free labor for plantation economies were just abandoned in favor of the greater economic efficiency of modern technology in the machine and digital age. But the social tenants of, of race superiority and class that supported and sustained the hunting, selling and trading of Africans to Europeans by some of our own people and the Europeans as well as Arabs and Muslims. Trade in interest continue to exist in the traditions of today's society in Canada. During the Black Power Renaissance period of the 50s through to the 90s. We described the under-representation of the black cause by upward mobile blacks in the white neo-colonial system as a sellout by those that could pass and they assimilated. So we were equally tough on those among us who seemed to, to us to be misguided. We described them as people with a black face but white mask. In Quebec, however, we have black people in high positions in the ruling party that tell us that all we have to do is to become Quebecois and speak French and everything will be fine. And in general, the power clique and their followers continue to deny that there is systemic discrimination in Quebec. And persist in arguing that collecting race-based data in the health sector and in the socio-economic spheres is not essential to the development of an equitable and fair democracy. Things do not seem to have changed much over the years. We are better educated, yes, in terms of skills acquisition. But still, we, the black people, are at the bottom of the social index everywhere. This seems, this fact, this statistical fact, seems to suggest that we can apply a cause and effect. That says that the society, the dominant mainstream society thinks that no matter how much education, so-called education blacks get, they're not as smart as those people that of the ancestry of what they describe as the Aryan race. We, of course, are allowed to talk black and wear the black face and dramatic hairstyle to march in protest. But in the inner sanctuaries where the gang of eight make decisions about the shape and look of the collective society, we are absent. Or some of us, at least. Express their gratefulness for being allowed to bear the false promises to the false, false promises to a fragmented population left at the mercy of racist policy and systemic discrimination in, in the regions across the South. Typically, what we see today and what we are experiencing in the, this period of elections at all, at the federal provincial level in Quebec and, 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 and the municipality. Is that politicians scatter dollar bills among the fragmented communities hoping to divert their attention, our attention, from the splintered leadership at all levels of the government. Some blacks seem to be satisfied. I love to appear as poster characters in photos taken with ministers at the endless consultant meetings and and announce, that announce pennies for the 1.2 million blacks in the country. The questions we all therefore are seriously pondering now. Is whether the glimmer of hope offered by the expanded boundaries of the Black Lives Matters movement will survive the elections called by the federal liberals. CAC and the city of Montreal. We, we, we pose the question seriously whether, which level of government and party is most likely to materialize that hope. Were blacks from the once English colonies of conquests? That is, the colonies of the Caribbean conquered and occupied by the various European nations? Will, will we, the blacks that have come out of those countries find a place in Quebec society or Canada? Quebec and Canada, that was once described as colonies of residence. Should blacks continue to struggle? That's the question. Should blacks continue to struggle against the racism and systemic discrimination embedded in the arrangements that manage Canadian societies? Or should we opt out of the Canadian system?
Clarence, Clarence, is Alex gonna make a presentation? Because then we won't have.
Yes, we'll be, I'll be done in, yeah, it's very short.
Thank you, thank you. I know, I know you have so much to say. I know, I know.
Yeah, or should we just opt out for what some of us are describing as a modern Garvey conceptualization of a return to a diasporic version of Africa? These are very troubling questions for us indeed. It would be great for us to have given the chance, be given the chance to raise them in response to the fears generated in our community by the government. But we are clearly not seen to be important subpopulations of this country. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Clarence, as always. Alex, vous voulez dire quelques mots parce que on a
Il reste combien de temps?
Non, non, il reste, mais j'aimerais aussi prendre des questions si c'est possible.
Thank you. To follow up with my senior colleague, Dr. Bain, in, in his event. I am speaking on behalf of, of, of Alex Adrian as a representative of the Quebec Butterback Educators. The, my, my comments really reflect some of the dialogue that I've had with some of my colleagues and, and our position on the entire debate. Bill 96 has brought to us another evidence, if I can use that word, of, of the narrative that has been inclusively seems to be between the two solitudes of this country. I've joined the QCGN. I am a Francophone, but as a president of an English-based organization, I felt it was my duty to join the rank of the QCGN because when the minority of, of a few are undermined, it's the minority of others, even those that don't have a voice. So by joining the QCGN in what we feel, what I feel, although I'm a Francophone, I feel that there's been an assault on the English community. And, and, and in, in itself, that assault is always an assault on all minorities. We've seen how the government had used political astuces to present a bill. The process is, there should be consultation, but we can see how the maneuvering has finally come to pass where they're, they don't want to hear from the, from the institutions or the organizations that have more, that have more to lose. I can imagine just the fact that QCGN has not been invited to debate the whole Bill 96. For us is again another, I guess, evidence of how political posturing has been put in place to undermine certain privileges that are owed to us by a democratic society, which, which is, if, if you want to, to evaluate how healthy a, a democracy is, it's in a way defends the right of the minority. However, we've seen, as a Francophone, I have seen how more and more there's been, the rights of the English minority has been impeded upon in, in a way that, that is reflected on perhaps how the black community has been historically undermined by both solitude, whether it's the English communities beforehand and the French. So our position is not that we are not involved in the process. We do believe that Bill 96 needs to be challenged because of what it undermines. And again, like with Sarah Cohen said, a lot of the evidence, whenever we want to bring up, well, we don't have any race-based data. We don't have any evidence of this. To us, it's always been that a, a, a means to deny access to certain fundamental rights that should be allowed to us. So we understand the political posturing that is going on. We've been at the other end, at the end of it, at the other end of it for, for a few destinations now. So our position, and, and as I shared, because a lot of the leaders of the community feel that we should not even be involved in, in, in this conversation because it does not seem to include us in its, in the, in the very premise of, of this dialogue. Yet, I came to Quebec, I was nine years old. I'm well over 60 now, I want to diverge exactly. So I feel that whenever you tell me, well, I'm not, no, Quebec is my home. Quebec is, and I feel it's important for us to Quebec is, and I feel it's important for us to forge a, 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 a place for us in this society. Right now, we are aligned with QCGN in defending those fundamental rights. And the way the cult is, is using strategic tools to undermine and to present a bill, but not given the opportunity to, to, to challenge that bill in the instances. So, uh, what I, I'd like to just conclude in, in, in saying that we are bystanders of sorts, but at the same time, we understand that whatever comes of, of, of this Bill ninety-six will impact a, a, the black English community, especially since that English community, the black English community has two armies going against it. First of all, it is a black community and it's part of that English minority. And we have seen how services over the years have eroded in favor of some nationalistic overlook. Who doesn't even take into consideration the conversations of the indigenous peoples of this land? The other communities that have contributed, I think of the Italian, I think of the, a, a, of the Greek community. I think of the Hispanic, there is so much more que, a, 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 that make up the Quebec of today and of tomorrow. So we, we are still baffled. And that's what I think Clarence was referring to, this old colonial uh structures that have been put in place as if Canada is only between the English and the French. And the fact that so many minorities have been excluded from the dialogue speaks to a larger problem that we think is, is, uh, undermining a, the democracy in, in, in Canada in general.
Je voudrais merci beaucoup Alex, uh, eh Clarence. Et une des raisons pourquoi on tient ces consultations publiques, c'est justement pour vous donner une, une occasion de faire valoir vos points de vue. Mais ça donne aucune façon prendre la responsabilité pour, euh, pour le gouvernement du Québec qui n'a pas eu une vraie discussion autour de ce loi avant que la loi soit présentée quand même. Uh, so I, I'm very happy that both, uh, Alex, uh, I'm sorry, Alex and Clarence are here today to add their voices to the other voices that we've heard over the five days about Bill ninety-six. Thomas, did you have a question, please?
Uh, yes, thank you, Alani. Et effectivement, merci beaucoup pour ce, ce témoignage tellement important dans, dans la discussion de ce projet de loi. Um, I, I do think this is an incredibly important addition to, to these hearings. And thank you both so much for, for, for raising these important points. Um, I, I do have a couple of questions. And one is, um, about the, the, the black community largely. It's, it is an interesting community. There, it represents a, a large number of different kinds of people. It is very diverse in its own right. It had, including the fact that there are Francophone members of the community and Anglophone members of the community. Within the context of this law, I'm, I'm curious if, uh, if how the community and what your sense is in terms of, will it affect different members of your community in different ways? And, and also, uh, are there, are there, uh, those that may support parts of the bill while other members of your community may not?
Uh, okay, if I may, first of all, the black community, you have to, in order to understand the, the situation that that we are faced with here, you have to understand how, ask a question, how the blacks get into the West. And simply, they got into the West for two reasons. Because there was an economic, um, system that was based on a trade which said there's only a fixed amount of wealth in the world. And if you need to, to be better off, you have to take it out of the, the bottoms of the ships of the other person. It's a more capitalist system of trade. But then, also, for whatever reasons, however, Europe evolved its consumption behaviors and habits and needs. Sugar was king, as they say, at a period in time. And it was possible to grow that sugar in the West throughout the Caribbean islands from Jamaica, all the way down into the northern parts of South America. Um, cotton was the complementary, king or queen, if you want to call it. And that was, came out of the United States essentially. Of course, that evolved into a situation where a man out in Europe, let's say, came to understand that economics was not based on a fixed amount of wealth, the name gold. That actually, the activity of hu- human activity and the response of the earth to that like activity and the environment to that activity produce an incredible amount of goods that satisfy our seemingly endless needs, right? And you needed labor and you wanted enough labor in Europe. Or that said, it couldn't take the labor from Europe because they had to deal with with the people reacting to their children being grabbed out of pubs and all the streets, et cetera. And for, for some, however, it came about, they found that there were a huge amount of peoples in Africa that could be acquired. Of course, they found this out after killing off every Caribbean, every Arab in the Caribbean, right? That's how we came to the West. But we didn't come to the West as a people called black people. We came to the West from different land and biospheres, all in Africa and other places. We didn't know each other. I didn't know Jamaican when I, until I came to Canada. That, that's the situation. Jamaica dealt directly with London Trinidad, that directly with London. Never did the two ever speak to each other. And that was true of the entire Caribbean, right? So we were a fragmented people. And that's, it's still the reality of today. We are a fragmented people, first trying to come together with a voice because we are not seen by Canadians or Americans as fragmented people. We are seen as a people, black.
Right. Dr. Bain, I just want to be given the opportunity to answer Thomas's question as well. I don't know if we're running out of time.
Uh, just, I have the most thankless job to keep everybody, only, only because we need to respect each of the speakers who are following you. But I, let's take the time to answer Thomas's question, please.
Thomas, I'm always a little baffled that when we refer to the black community, myself being a Francophone and, and, and evolving in, in mostly the English community, but I also sit on, on boards of a French organization. The bigger black population in, 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 in Quebec, I think, are, are Francophone blacks. I don't think because the Bill ninety-six is a bill to protect French. I think some of, some of them may not be fully aware of the implication and some of the details justified that they are Francophones and it suits them well. Look, uh, uh, and, and I've heard, uh, Sarah Cohen, and I totally agree. The beauty about Quebec is this, the, is the vibrant, is the, it's, it's the exchange between the French and the English. And, and what, what makes it even richer when, when you go to, uh, New Brunswick and you see that same sort of coexistence with overall has a tendency to enrich society. So to answer your question, I don't think the larger French black population is fully aware of the implication of, 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 uh, Bill ninety-six because it may speak to, uh, uh, some of them are unilingual. They don't speak English. They don't see how it may also, as, uh, as Sarah said before, it's the idea that a, a, a subgroup will not be able to study English and have, and, and have asked, asked a it, it have access to other, a, a, a job that is. So that's why for the English community, it's a little bit more pressing to see a Bill ninety-six. But we've made an effort to present the bill to the French community, to the black French community, so that they fully understand the implication of this bill and how some of their rights on the long run will be undermined.
And you said about the fact that, um, we are just, we have problems in, in a major reason for us having lots of problems as a people is because uh, of the, 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 the fact that you, you, um, European peoples or people of the, of the white European ancestry, uh, who according to Art de Gobinot and the English historians said that they were the only people capable of creating a civilization. And I guess that means in terms of skyscrapers and boats and all the rest of it and, and so on. And it's the only, and among those nations that were white, only those people that had a large proportion of white people that are the Aryan race were actually the most productive. So we are discriminating, that still remains a part of the population. It's although not expressed in that way, I mean, we, we don't express things in that. But fundamentally, although the wages and salaries have increased in Canada over the years, both of blacks and immigrants and white, uh, European peoples. You notice on that.
Clarence, I, I'm sorry. I, I have to be strict now because we're running out of time.
The difference between wages have exploded upward for the white male and have remained slightly increased for the black, which is, could be interpreted, could be interpreted. There's still a concept of no matter how, how, how much not, uh, information a black man acquires, that he isn't, because he's black, he's still, or she is black, they're still inferior to the white because the whites are more ingenious. They can use information better than black.
I, I'm really sorry I have to do this because I could spend hours listening to you Clarence and also to Alex. Uh, Thomas, I'm gonna have to use my discretion right now unless it's a quick question because I know that our next speaker has been waiting for a while.
If I may ask one quick question to Alex and, and I just, I do want to say thank you to Professor Bain for the, giving some of that history. It's important to, and, and is so crucial to describing that the black community is indeed a community of communities. Um, to that point, Alex, you, you raised an incredibly important point about representation. Um, and with the, the National Assembly formal hearings coming up, uh, in the very near future. Um, I, I, I'm curious if there is someone on the list who you feel will be representing uh, the interests of the black community and, and if not, uh, how that may be addressed before those hearings.
Well, to tell you the truth, from the institution that I felt could be representative, no. And it would be, it would be good to review the list and perhaps, and I could make some suggestions. Or I mean, not perhaps me, but the Black Community Forum or organization that I work with would make suggestion to be heard. But we've noticed, Thomas, that it's, 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 it, that's, that's, that's what, that it's almost like, it's a strategy to, to not have those people that can actually challenge the bill not to be present at the assembly.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
Oh, please, go ahead. I'm sorry. I thought you finished. Go ahead.
No, no, I have that.
Excuse moi. No, no, excuse moi. And I want to underline the fact that the QCGN will be presenting before the National Assembly hearings on September twenty-eighth. And all the testimony and briefs, obviously testimony will have to do a summary and I'm not going to go into the, the details of that, but the briefs will be attached to the brief that the QCGN will be presenting to the National Assembly. That doesn't justify, just to be clear, it doesn't justify that other groups were not invited
Invited.
directly to present their point of view. Uh, that does not justify, but it is the situation we're in. And if I may be encouraged, I've heard that the government is actually opening up to one or two other groups because there's pressure being applied. Uh, and, and I would recommend highly that if any of the participants and any of the, and now I'm gonna use my own hat as a politician, that you should be speaking to your M and A, you should be writing to the leaders to make these hearings as open as possible so we can have a cross view of everyone who makes up the society to present their grave concerns, because that's what we've heard on the bill. Now, I, I'm sorry, uh, Clarence, it's such a pleasure always listening to you and learn, I always learn. And, uh, we could do a whole session. We could do a whole session on what you said. Alex, je voudrais merci beaucoup. Et je vous souhaite bonne chance et je vous encourage de demander à vos collègues francophones. Parce que c'est ça qu'on, il ne manque à ce moment, des voix francophones pour faire voir loi auprès du gouvernement que cette loi est discriminatoire. So thank you very much.
So, 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 then I would have a Thomas and, and organization to suggest, but I will speak to you after.
Okay, please do that.
Very much. Thank you.
So merci Alex and Clarence. Uh, the Bishop Forum Leadership Institute hosts a conference every summer in Lenoxville, bringing the future leaders of Quebec's English-speaking community for a discussion on the Quebec of Tomorrow and the role they can play in developing it. This year, they heard from Jean Charret, Melanie Joly, Christopher Skeet, and many others. The conference ends with presentations by small groups of participants to a mock parliamentary commission made up of several Quebec, uh, luminaries like Marlene Jennings, R. Marlene Jennings, the president of the QCGN, and others. One of the groups this year focused on Bill ninety-six. And we are pleased that they have agreed to represent their position paper today. Uh, welcome Houston Rifai. I hope I haven't mispronounced your name, but I'm in the same league. By the way, they mispronounce mine all the time. And Song Yang. So who will begin? And welcome.
Hi, do you hear me? I'll begin.
Yes, yes, I can hear you, Song.
So I'll present, uh, the impacts of Bill ninety-six on higher education. And, uh, my colleague, uh, Houston will speak when, at the end. So who am I? I'm twenty-five years old. I live in Montreal. I'm a fashion immigrant from China. So because of that, I went through the French education system uh, for Bill one oh one. Then I decided to go, and then I got a degree in computer science from McGill. Currently, I'm doing a master's degree in computer science at UDM. So now you know my background and my biases. So Bill ninety-six proposes enrollment caps on English sejps to seventeen point five percent. In practice, this would just prevent more people from attending English sejps. Though, so it limits choice for students. Um, just like with supply and demand, if you limit the choices, but the demand is still high, it would just raise the required grades to get into an English sejps. But people still want to go to English schools. The result is simply that students will leave Quebec for Ontario. And this is likely because after graduation from high school, it is the stage of life where people have the feeling that they have to explore the world and to see what is offered to them. And in addition to this, certain universities in Ontario also accept Quebec's high school graduates directly, especially the top performers that would be skimmed off by Bill ninety-six's, uh, increase in required grades for admission. So on a societal level, as politicians should take note, this leads to a brain drain from Quebec to Ontario. Some university students will never come back. That, that is just how universities work. When non-local students go somewhere, there is always a chance that some of them, some of them will never come back. So in pro, in this process, Quebec loses talented, young, educated people. And these people are Anglophones that studied in English high schools and completely bilingual graduates that went to the French high school system. So people like me. Uh, in addition to this, Ontario has a much friendlier identity politics than in Quebec. Just like how when international Chinese students learn about a democratic culture when they arrive in Canada for the first foot, uh, for first, first time. Uh, Quebec interprovincial students will learn about freedom of speech, will experience freedom of speech for the first time in Ontario. There's no religious restrictions nor language restrictions in Ontario. And the people that go to Ontario to study in English are the least likely to agree with Bill twenty-one and even Bill one oh one. Finally, job prospects are better in Ontario and money matters when we decide where to stay. So the question on politicians' mind that I feel is this, does attending an English school convert you into an angry phone? So I conducted a study on the language of education of current Quebec politicians. I went on their websites and I, uh, found their CDs to, to see where they studied in the past. And this is the data that I found. Thirty percent of current MNAs have studied in English, seventy percent studied in French. And yet, Bill ninety-six receives unanimous approval at the National Assembly. Does that mean, this, I think this just dispels the fact that English schools convert you to the Anglophone cause if you can state this nationalist after attending English schools. So, uh, Bill ninety-six wouldn't, won't push everyone away. There are some people will decide to stay despite the Bill ninety-six. So what kind of society? does this mean for the people who decide to stay? Because that would be reflected in the attitudes of uh, the education they receive. So Bill ninety six pushes Quebec nationalism, and this nationalism is defined by hostile social political climate that is compounded with Bill twenty one to target Anglophones, Alophones, visible and religious minorities, and any Francophone who sympathizes with these people. This attitude will ultimately be reflected in how people receive education in Quebec. And the French language at all costs is what I experienced at the University of Montreal. Let me tell you our experience there. Uh, at U, at UDM, the French language takes precedence over scientific and intellectual curiosity. I had a teaching position in uh, at UDM in software engineering. I offered the choice for students, offered, not forced. I offered them the choice to submit their homework in English. And immediately, the administration punished me for giving this offer, even though all textbooks are in English and computer science is in English. Ultimately, under the, the pressure from the administration, I resigned from my teaching job. The, the fact that I offered uh, computer science homework to be done in English is to reflect what is happening in the twenty first century in the world. Computer science is not like cooking. You don't, you don't stay silent and then just do something and come back and re- repeat this over and over. Computer science, uh, as in software development, is a continuous process. You use documentation, you Google things, you read scientific research papers. And because the langue frinqua of the, the lingua franca of the world is in English, so is computer science. And people, when they go to university, they have this attitude that they want to join the world. And I think UDM knows this, that's why you have this cute picture here that, that says UDM is also a university of the world. And, and yet, they're, they're not trying to join the world when they reject the English language as much as they're doing right now. And this is a controversial statement, but it is two hundred years too late to change the lingua franca. Because that would entail imperialism, that would entail Quebec bringing French through imperialism upon the world. So the effect on higher education ultimately spills over into the economy. What happens there always happens in the economy. Um, Bill, because Bill ninety six uh, stresses unilingual French Francophone startups. They are less competitive on the world stage. In the twenty first century, Quebec is competing not just against other French speakers in the world, it's competing against the entire global economy. And then, we, we have to understand what the effect of Bill ninety six uh, is putting on academia by analyzing the entire attitude of the Quebec government. So we have a, a war of woke way by François Legault. A war on English, Bill ninety six, and a war on religion. It amounts to a war on diversity. Academia is broadly socially liberal, and there's a reason for that. Academia is the place where people question the foundations of our society, put into question, uh, and uh, see whether the norms we have today are truly good or not. And that's why they dare to go beyond the socially accepted narrative of French. And ultimately, when we undermine academia, we are also undermining innovation in Quebec. Montreal is a tech startup, but with Bill ninety six, I think this will just destroy the entire artificial intelligence and technology sector. So now, uh, I'd like to get a word from my colleague, Houston, are you here?
Yes, I am here.
Yes, we do, Houston, thank you.
Alright, so I might not agree with everything my colleague has said, but I do agree that there is a shift in the government's policies, because we need to understand Bill ninety six is not in isolation. It comes along with Bill twenty one and the immigration restrictions. And I actually have a question to the CAQ and the supporters of these uh, bills essentially. And I think although the word woke is funny, it, it does actually tell you something because he used the way that Legault used it against his uh, against the, the chef de, the Quebec so there. He used it in a way to say that you are a race traitor, a traitor against the Quebec nation. He invoked the name of duplessy, a fascist in a positive light. A man who gave welcome and comfort to fascist leaders in his time. We need to understand the position that we are in and the political legacy of who we are speaking to. And I do have a question for those who support this bill. I have to ask, do you want us here? Because the facts, we, we've, we've laid out so many facts in these, in these hearings, in uh, in our fight against these bills, in our fight against um, this misinformation from the government, we've laid out, the facts are on our side, French is not in decline. Certainly, the French language needs to be protected, but it is not in decline. The measure they use is mother tongue. My own father, his mother tongue is Arabic. He doesn't speak it. He speaks French at work and English and French at home. And yet, he is not a Francophone by the, by the measure of the government. The government is using a measure which also says that English is on the decline equally, if not more so, in Quebec. So what we are really talking about is a feeling that the government is playing to, one which is discomforted with the changes. Anglophones and especially Alophones have adopted French as the public language. That is not a matter of question anymore. The question is, are, is the, is the Francophone majority, what Parizeau called nous, comfortable with what has happened in society? Are they comfortable with the changes that certainly have happened? Are they comfortable with those? Because it's not just the French language. It is also religion, it is also immigration, it is also the face, the face of Quebec is changing, the face of Montreal specifically is changing. And this is what disqualifies them, and this is why it's not actually different from other populist uh, movements around the world. It's dressed up in the language of decades ago, but it isn't the same movement. Um. What Bill ninety six and Bill twenty one do is they attempt to define who les Québécois de souche are. And they are not anything other than Catholic, mostly white, and French in a very particular accent. And these are the things that are trying to be enforced with these bills, frankly. And if there was an effort to encourage French in society, why would their measures be so punitive? We need to ask the government, do you want us here, essentially? Because these measures are meant to hide the diversity of Quebec. They are meant to even encourage those who disagree to leave. When Legault was speaking in the National Assembly, he was speaking to all those who dissent within the majoritarian community, within the Quebec nation, against this bill, against these measures, and against the authoritarian attitude of the CAQ government and the parties which support it. I want to ask the government whether or not they believe that non-white Catholic Francophones have a place in society here. Whether or not Montreal has a place in, in, in the halls of Quebec City. Whether or not the society which is diverse should be reflected within the Quebec nation as it, as it stands today. Because I think everybody who has come here understands themselves to be excluded from what Parizeau called nous. Well, I'm saying nous is us, everyone who is not part of Parizeau's definition of the Quebec nation and Legault's definition of the Quebec nation. I asked whether or not the government wishes for us to be here in the first place. Thank you.
So uh. Thank you so much. Yes, Song.
Can I conclude this?
You can conclude, please, quickly, because we want to allow questions and I do want to respect the time restraints of everyone. And we still have two more speakers. Please go ahead quickly, you have a minute.
Okay, very quick. So, so I'll just summarize, why am I here? Young people don't care about these things. So what, what, after I graduated from McGill, I just wanted to leave and explore the world, but then COVID hit, so now I'm stuck here. So I decided to run for office. I mean, if I'm stuck here, I don't want to see Quebec tearing itself apart. So that's why I'm going to run for the National Assembly myself. I founded my own political party, so consider supporting me.
Thank you very much for that political plug. Now, if you could just clear the screen, I would like to ask Thomas to ask a question. Thank you both, very much. And it's, your perspective is very important. It's your generation that will be directly affected by uh, this bill. Thank you, Song, and thank you, Houston. Thomas?
Uh, thank you, Alenny, uh, and also, uh, Song, Houston, thank you both for your, for your testimony. Um, indeed, uh, uh, the question that I, I have for you is um, focused on the part of the bill that really uh, will, will greatly affect those in your generation, and it is related to the, uh, to the, the caps, if you will, the seven point five percent cap for, for sejaps. Um, I'm interested, you, you, you're, it's, it's a recent experience for you, and, and in your own life, those people, uh, you know, those classmates of yours and so on, um, what that uh, cap would represent in terms of just having a choice to, to study in English or French as you see fit uh, at that stage in your study?
Uh, I'm going to respond to this. So um, the, the cap doesn't ban everyone, it only, it limits some people, but by doing this, it raises the required grades, and so the top uh, who usually get in will, will then get rejected from these, these sejaps. And these, these are the most motivated people who want to go to English schools. What would this entail? They would just leave. They, they would just leave. They, they don't want to go to a French seja because they went to the entire French system due to Bill one oh one. They want to avoid it.
Thank you, Song. Thomas?
It's simply, and this is to either of you, um, do you know examples of people who, uh, who have gone in the past, obviously with different restrictions, but um, who may have made those choices even in, in a time when there, there was an option to go to English sejaps? Do you know people who have left the province over questions such as access to education?
Yes. They went to the United States, so it's even further than, than Ontario.
I don't think any one of our generation don't know people who have gone uh, to other provinces or even to the United States where it's quite expensive for an education, at least in part, because they could get an education in a different language, in a, in English and have access to the global market. Now, I don't want to get into too much of the, uh, like, essentially putting it in the face of the French majority that, oh, the world language is English, get used to it. That's not the point of this. The point of this is to say that really, having, being bilingual is actually a good thing. It's not good to leave your young people in ignorance. It is the open policies of frankly duplessy to keep, keep your young ignorant and stupid and inside of Quebec. And let your society die slowly of conservatism, but thank you.
There's a lot of background noise. I don't know if it was coming from you, Houston, or everybody to put their mics.
Uh, it is, it is for me, unfortunately, it is.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, that's fine. Thank you. Um, Thomas? I do have a question. Thank you, thank you. I do have a question for Song, because I was fascinated, I must say, about the statistic that you put out there, that eighty percent of the M and As actually studied in English.
It's thirty percent.
Thirty percent, sorry. I mis, I misread it. That's why I was, I wanted a clarification, I misread. But even thirty percent, even thirty percent, okay, the fact is, uh, and I, I believe even uh, some of the children of some of the uh, separatists have sent their, uh, their children to English universities or international universities, uh, although I don't have those statistics, but I, I, I know that a lot of them are are bilingual and they are very capable. So if thirty percent of the M and As, and since you want to be a future political leader, since thirty percent of the M and As, I may put you on the spot, but having worked in politics for most of my life, how can we convince at least those thirty percent? Okay, that this legislation really limits the opportunities that your generation will have. Give me one or two suggestions that you would put forward, okay? Uh, if you, you are elected. And it is putting you on the spot. If you are elected, uh, that you would put, should we scrap the whole legislation and start from zero? Or are there one or two uh, things that you would like to, uh, uh, to be changed? In, in terms of Bill ninety six, of course, eh?
Okay, I, I would actually go in and further. I would just scrap Bill one oh. Let people choose the school they want since birth, and then maybe they will go to French seja because they went to high school in English.
Okay, Song. Houston, I don't know if you have an opinion that you want to.
I, I tend to be more realistic and I want to, I, I know we're, we're all against the bill in this particular hearing, I guess. It's not an official hearing, but it's the QCGN's hearing. But I, I want to discuss what ways we can actually speak to the majority. Why did Legault have such a negative attitude towards the QS opposing him even mildly as they do? It's because you have a situation in which that is an argument that might actually appeal to the majority in Quebec, which has a history. And it's, uh, it, we need to understand history in order to understand why this is happening. They're fighting to go to the past. I have spoken to separatists. They do not believe you when you say that the average Anglophone and Francophone are equal in their economic outcomes. That shocks, absolutely shocks every single separatist I've ever said that to, most of whom flat out do not believe me and will not look into it because it fundamentally destroys their understanding of the world. The fact that a system of oppression that has existed in Quebec is largely over is something that they cannot conceive. So actually having to speak to and address their position is what we need to do. It's not just, here are the real facts. It's, we need to actually speak in a language that they understand, and I don't mean just be French, I mean the arguments that we're making. We can say the English arguments in French, but frankly, the thing that will actually get people on board is why did, because duplessy is the, is the, is the CAQ's legacy, frankly. They're from that end of Quebec political culture. And it's very well, they're very well aware. And actually making it explicit actually does help to address some of the issues we're having. If you actually explicitly descri- describe that this is the policies of the fascists of seventy years ago.
We have to be careful on language. We have to be careful.
Frankly, duplessy was a fascist. No, no question, right? Duplessy was a fascist, right? He was a fascist supporter at least. And Legault spoke to, spoke of how his virtue was his nationalism. That's not a small thing that happened this week. We need to understand that.
Do you feel though, that your generation, you feel that your generation, because this is really uh, one of the reasons we didn't invite you, okay? And, and do you feel that your generation feels the same way, Houston? As did the, the generation that was part of the uh, was part of the revolution that uh, Revolution Tranquille au Québec. Do you actually feel, because honestly, you are more closer to that than I am or others who, who presented before the QCGN. And by the way, I just want to underline something, the QCGN did not begin to, to uh, be to necessarily say that the bill should be scrapped. The reason we did the public consultations to be giving, to give everybody an opportunity. Okay, to actually uh, acquire some knowledge, including all those who are just listening in. Opportune acquire the depth in which and what the impact is of Bill ninety six. Because as was said by a number of the speakers, most people haven't read the bill. And it's quite a lengthy bill. It's quite a lengthy bill, and even I, as a former legislator, yeah, I, I mean, it's very complex and uh, so, I really want to get a sense, Houston, from your contact with the young Francophones. Do they have any knowledge of the bill? Are they at all engaged? I know they just started university, so their concerns right now may be their education, but how do we raise awareness among that generation? Because they'll be directly impacted by this bill and negatively.
I will say this, there's a bunch of different things that I've seen. So far, it's a mix of apathy, mostly, most of the people who support the bill supported because, oh, it's pro-French. I believe in the French language, moving on from that position. It's not a very deep thing, frankly. They support the bill because it's pro-French. They tend to be more engaged by Bill twenty one, which the young people tend to very much oppose because they understand and they have friends who might actually wear the uh, religious symbols and they understand who they're speaking to. Now, I live in my own bubble, I'm talking about Montreal, that's why the noise, but uh, sorry. But uh, outside of Montreal, the political culture is completely different. I don't know very many young people off the island, frankly. Uh, and those who I do tend to see the world the same way that their parents do. And the Quiet Revolution obviously was an urban phenomenon to a large extent. It was a Montreal phenomenon to a large extent. And frankly, um, it's, there's similar sentiments, but I don't see the political engagement on this issue. Frankly, it's seen as a minority issue that most people don't much care for. It sounds like the sort of thing that their parents argue over and they move on. Uh, that's what Bill ninety six is to them. Uh, that's what Bill ninety six is to them. And they don't really understand the ways that it will impact them. And those who do are already against the bill, so it's not, then, they're not speaking to anyone. It's very, it's easy, it feels like a personal thing and not a political movement that they should join. For, and joining the English political movement has a bad taste to that, frankly. So it's very difficult to, um, to bridge that divide, frankly.
Thank you, Houston. Song, did you want to add anything? And then we have to wrap it up unless Thomas wants to add a quick question, but go ahead, Song.
Uh, I, I would just say that young people don't see themselves in the future in Quebec. When, yeah, they, they want to leave. If it wasn't for the pandemic, they would have left. When I looked at the reportage on Haza Canada, they, they all said, I don't feel Quebecer. I don't feel my future in Quebec in the next ten years. If it's not English Seja that is pushing them, that is keeping them here, it is eventually economic circumstance and Bill twenty one, most likely, and Bill ninety six, as they feel the impact of language restrictions more and more and more.
Thank you very much. Uh, oh, yeah, Houston, you wanted to add something in?
I feel like it's important to actually make, uh, not mix up our terms too much. Because when we talk about Francophone, what we're really talking about, what we mean is the new that we were talking about, the Sush. Those who are part of the French majority. If you're talking about various linguistic and ethnic minorities of Montreal and the people who live next to them, frankly, Song is right. That's their feeling. Their feeling is, I'm not part of the society. I want to leave. But for those who are Quebecois from, it's all set. It's, eh, that's what I was trying to speak to earlier. We need to separate our terms a little bit because that's what they do.
Agreed.
Les woke, as, as Legault puts it, uh, are already on side, uh, with the diverse, uh, society and the diverse community. It's the diversity that they are trying to fight against. That's, we need to make those explicitly our terms. Because frankly, the government doesn't really care what the minorities say. They send out Christopher Skeet to yell at me at the Bishop's Forum, basically.
Thank you very much. Uh, and, and it's a very important point you're raising. It, it is, I mean, they're not monolithic, the Francophones. Neither is any community monolithic. And that point has been made even recently with the black community earlier. Thomas, did you have any one last question? Because we do need to wrap it up.
Nothing further, just to say thank you, gentlemen. I, I appreciate it having your time today.
Very much so. Thank you, Houston. Thank you, Song, and good luck, Song.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and thank you. And I see that we're having a lively discussion, by the way, in the chat room. I'm sorry I can't get to, to all of it, but, uh, we will eventually, uh, be answering and, uh, feel free to continue to, to chat and to continue among yourselves and to spread the word also on Bill ninety six and its implications. I'm very happy now to introduce Kevin Constant Halawat. You'll have to correct me with your family name. I get the same problem very often, Kevin, but we'll come back to that. Was until, uh, recently president of the Dawson Student Union, where he and his, uh, uh, my notes are not very clear. Last May, he was one of the first, uh, student leaders to raise concerns about Bill ninety six. At that time, he questioned the Quebec government's plan to cap enrollment at the schools, saying it will only push more students to study out of the province. And I apologize for mispronouncing your name, Kevin, and, uh, please feel free to begin.
Thank you, and, uh, thank you, um, for, for inviting me to this consultation. I, I was at an event a, a while back with the Déménique en glam when the bill first came out. Um, so thank you for inviting me again. Um, uh, my, my name pronunciation, we're pretty close. It's actually Colton. A lot of people think it's Constant. Um, it is a, there, there are both names in Quebec, but it's Colton Holowetsi. Um, and, uh, I'll, I'll get into the origins of that a little later, um, in my presentation. I don't want to repeat myself because I know we were just talking about, uh, CJPS, uh, Bill ninety six. There might be a few points that, uh, might, might, uh, repeat or echo off of what, um, uh, uh, the other gentleman were saying. Um, but yeah, I just have a few disclaimers first. Um, so I'm not speaking on behalf of the Dawson Student Union or Dawson College. I just wanted to be clear, uh, about that. I am a former president, but I'm speaking today as a private citizen. Um, but I do have a, a stake in this because I am, as you can see with my name, I am part of the English community, but also the French community in the sense that, hmm, I, I've always been kind of in the middle. Um, and that makes me feel a bit sometimes like an être, um, in Quebec society because I don't feel completely attached to one part of society. And obviously, we've all felt the, the divide that has only grown over the last year. So I'm, I'm going to touch on that, uh, a bit in my presentation. And I will be, uh, talking about Bill ninety six and the effects on CJPS specifically and what I've heard from, uh, people on the ground, from friends, um, and, uh, uh, youth, uh, that, that are generally concerned about this bill. Um, one thing I wanted to say as well, I've been in both French and C, uh, English CJPS. So I've seen the differences in, in the approach to, uh, education. I mean, I think that's something important because a lot of people will make assumptions about CJPS, uh, whether it's from the French side or the English side, and they've never been to both, um, generally. So I do have kind of a, a perspective on that. And, and that will tie into, uh, my later point on, uh, a section of the bill which wants to impose an exit exam to, uh, English CJPS. So, um, as I had mentioned, so I'm from, uh, kind of a, a mixed family. So my dad is a first generation immigrant, so I'm second generation, I guess, immigrant, uh, from Ukrainian descent and German descent. That's why my name, it's Ukrainian, the origin. And on my mom's side, it's from a kind of, what we, what I guess Houston would call the new. So historical kind of Quebec, French Canadian family that goes back. I, I actually checked my, uh, my geological tree a few, uh, a few months back. And it goes all the way back to New France during my fever. So, um, I really have a kind of a perspective on, on kind of both communities. I did go to, uh, English elementary. So I do have that droit à éduquer son anglophone. But I also went to French high school. And then, as I mentioned, I went to both English and French CJPS. Um, so first off, on Bill ninety six, so I think the greatest issue that I have seen with this bill and capping CJPS, which obviously the intent of this is to restrict access to English education, to make it kind of a, a, a CJPS system, English CJPS system, only accessible or practically only accessible to English communities that only caters to English, uh, students that have that droit. Um, actually, um, obviously, it's very clear that, um, to me, higher education CJPS is a, not a mandatory education. This is a choice that students are making to attend an institution. They don't even need to go to CJPS. They could go to another province, as it was mentioned earlier. Um, and I feel like a government and the general impression, the fact that government wants to put very much restrictions on higher education sets a very dangerous precedent, um, for further interference in what is generally described as kind of the intellectual power of society, uh, where, uh, freedom of speech, uh, is, is, is generally, uh, praised and, and very important. Um, so obviously, we know what the bill does, uh, concerning the capping of, uh, CJPS. Um, can you all, can you guys hear me? Because sometimes my internet cuts. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, perfect. Um, so of course, um, as, as kind of like, uh, a, a concern Quebecois, I think on one hand, uh, there are going to be effects on, uh, the French community as well as the English community. And I want to talk about both because I think it's important. Um, so if I talk about the English commu, uh, the French community first, um, I, 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 the fact that French Canadians who want to learn English, who want to attend an English CJPS won't have access anymore, or the acts will be limited, of course, to only those who have the highest grade. That will, uh, that will take away the opportunity, as it was mentioned previously, to learn a second language and to be more competitive on the workforce and to help Quebec shine internationally. Because of course, the language of business is English. We all know this. Um, and while French is important as well, um, knowing two languages, being bilingual opens a lot of doors for people. And, um, I can, I can attest to that. I work at a bank, a Canadian bank. And, um, the fact I know English actually is beneficial for me. It allows me to actually speak on behalf of my clients, uh, clients, on behalf of my colleagues whenever they need help. Because a lot of the, uh, higher, um, uh, higher management in, in the company or could say kind of the central management is all in English in Toronto. So, um, on my hand, we're depriving the French, uh, community of an opportunity to learn a second language. Um, and of course, out of the, my friends during, uh, why, why I went to Dawson, which most of them have, have graduated, um, I'd say probably half would not have gone to Dawson, would not be able to go to Dawson, probably if, um, if, uh, basically they wouldn't have like, uh, the droit qui, they wouldn't have a first, uh, round choice. Um, if this bill was implemented at the time that they had applied. Because most of them are, um, uh, students that studied French in high school. I don't have that droit qui. Um, and when we ask, when I would ask them, why did you choose to attend Dawson? They would say, well, I want to learn English, not because I don't like French, but because I want to be more competitive. I want to ha, have that, um, that additional skill. Um, so, and, and these are, these are people, um, some, some of my friends actually were, uh, recent immigrants from like four or five years ago. Um, and what's, what's kind of ironic is, you know, of, of, uh, like all of our, our laws in Quebec around French language try to, um, really, uh, push the French language on, on immigrants so they can learn the language, uh, 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 used in Quebec, of course. Um, and, you know, there's often like, uh, discussion about maybe you're not so not being good in French language, uh, not being learned fast enough. But these are, these are people that came like five years ago, they immigrated from South America. And while they did have a lax language under their, their, um, under the belt, um, they managed to learn French super quickly. Um, and that's why they felt comfortable now to, uh, learn another language, to learn English. So, um, it, it, to me, it's, it, to go back to my main point, it, it's just the fact that there's going to be a cap, that spaces are going to be limited for English CJPS, that's going to deprive a lot of, uh, young people from opportunities, um, to learn, uh, English, um, before going to university, which sometimes students want to pursue again in English in university, some don't. It's, it's, of course, the government has just kind of spread these statistics. I can't speak to the veracity of those statistics, but they're not, uh, an English, um, uh, CJPS graduate will be more tempted to continue in English in university. I can say I'm going to l'Université Lava, which is in French. So, um, it's not, I don't think it's necessarily true how every, how government tries to, or we could say, uh, people in the field try to often, uh, blame CJPS for longissusation. Um, so on the point of less Francophones having access, my fear, and I, I know that other people at the college, both faculty and students, have expressed kind of concern, uh, over, uh, it being more elitist or, uh, basically, uh, only the, like, la chem that I can will have access to, obviously, English CJPS because places are going to be so restricted. And of course, um, uh, when generally there's, there's more, uh, restriction on spaces, less available spaces, usually like a lot of private school students end up having access to these, um, to these programs because, uh, I, I don't want to get too much into like, uh, the quality of education or whatever. But it does happen that, uh, often private schools will have, um, greater resources for students and that can help with their academic success, which will be done to be, uh, accepted, uh, in, in like more, we could say, exclusive schools. And the fear is that, uh, Dawson, John Abbott, these English CJPS will kind of, eh, all the Francophone students that'll be accepted will be from that mid-year, from, from a more, uh, preppy kind of, uh, academic past, like in elementary and high school. Um, and that overall could affect the kind of dynamic at these schools. So I can say that Dawson is a super diverse school, and that's one of the things I love about it so much. We have people from all over, uh, even outside of Montreal. Some people even come from, uh, the north, la Côte Nord and all over the place. And they, they come to this school and it really allows, uh, for interesting exchanges, um, very enriching. Um, and, uh, with this, with this capping, you're basically taking away a part of that student population. You're, uh, you're basically, uh, only giving access, priority access to English community, which of course, I think it's important that, uh, English speakers have access to, uh, the, the higher education, the language of their choice. Um, however, it's just going to recreate a divide once again in society. And that's, that's a, a, a big concern that these CJPS will just become kind of a bubble for, um, English, uh, the English community. And I think there's, there's a, a general, um, interest in exchanging, uh, more widely with, with everyone and having a more diverse and inclusive kind of, uh, learning environment. So, uh, that will definitely be, uh, uh, an issue that, uh, that, that needs to be raised, uh, during consul, parliamentary consultations. Um, the other thing I want to talk about, and, uh, I, I think this was touched upon as well, but it's the, basically kind of the taming of the English CJPS. It seems like government's approach with this bill is, is very clear. They're trying to, um, make the English CJPS pretty, uh, they're, they're trying to, um, how can I say, I try, I have no better word than basically taming the English CJPS. There's a lot of competition. We've seen a lot of people want to go to these CJPS because they're successful at, um, at instructing, uh, and having very, uh, successful graduates in university. And of course, um, it, it seems like government is trying to limit basically the potential of, of growth for these CJPS, uh, to allow French CJPS to grow even more. Um, and it, it, to me, that seems like the wrong approach. I think especially when we're talking about education, we want our, our students to have a freedom of choice. We want students to be able to, uh, of course, um, uh, choose the, the, the school that they believe is best. And if Dawson College, for example, is, it has better programs or, um, has, has, uh, certain aspects of their, um, the way they approach education that's more interesting for students, well, students shouldn't have to, uh, um, shouldn't be deprived of that, of that choice. I chose Dawson College because I liked, uh, um, better their approach to education, uh, to higher education. I've been in French CJPS as I have seen it. Um, and it's very different, the environment, uh, the, the, the different, uh, approaches that they take, um, uh, with, with teachers, the, the way you build your schedule, everything is, is different. Um, and I preferred that approach. Um, so I chose to go to Dawson. Um, to think that students won't be able to make that choice to me is, is, i- 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 it's, it's, it's disappointing and it's disenfranchising. I, I think that, um, again, like, I, I think I'm repeating myself here, but, um, yeah, we, we shouldn't be basically limiting the growth of these, uh, higher education institutions. And, you know, obviously, the capping of the admissions does limit also financing and sent, sets a trend uh, for government to kind of make English CJPS, uh, kind of a second class CJPS. Um, uh, we can say like making all English CJPS basically second class CJPS and to really prioritize only French CJPS. When in fact, it should be, all CJPS should be treated equally. It should be like, for example, financing projects like the expansion of Dawson. Dawson has been, uh, struggling with its space for years. Um, and they accepted more students because the ministry asked them to. Back in the day, there's this whole, um, situation where there weren't enough spaces. I, I, I'm sure QC, uh, QCGN is, is fully aware of that. Um, and they accepted more students, but they didn't have the necessary space. There's been a space deficit. And this project has been kind of on the fence for years. And finally, they're coming around to build this, this, um, this infrastructure. And it's because there is a need. And that's how, um, these investments and financing should be treated. Not because they're teaching in English, they shouldn't get financing, they should give financing to French CJPS. That's not how they should go about it. It should go with priority. Um, so in, in any case, um, I guess that's, that would be my point, uh, concerning financing and to wrap up. Um, the bill does also intend to, and government's not very clear on this, but they do want to have a French exit exam, uh, added in CJPS level, uh, for English CJPS. Now, I remember talking to Dawson's administration. They had no clue how this was going to go down. And it's still very unclear. Um, government really needs to clarify what they intend to do with this. Because, um, if we take, for example, French exit exams, um, in French CJPS and we apply them directly to English CJPS, the issue with that is, these exams are extremely hard. Students have only two French classes in, in CJPS and all students do the one oh three French, which is the Français Première langue, uh, littérature. I think that's what it's called. Um, so obviously, English speakers, uh, or just people that attend an English CJPS won't be adequately prepared to go through this épreuve, uh, this exit exam. And if I could expand on that, a lot of French students who spoke in French all their life, um, failed this exam. Um, i- i- in, in the French, it's also the French exit exam. It's failed a lot by students. Literature classes, and I've seen it when I was at a French CJPS, are very hard, uh, at the CJPS level. Um, so obviously, like, if they're applying on just applying the same exam to everyone in Quebec, that's very problematic because English speakers won't be prepared, uh, for this exam. Now, if they're only, uh,
Kevin, I really, it's, it's been a long day and, uh, we have one more speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
It's very, no, 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 don't be sorry. And I, I, I'm sure that, It's very, no, 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 don't be sorry. And I I I'm sure that uh all our participants uh want to hear your point of view, and so do we at the QCGN. And like I said, I have the thankless job of keeping everybody on time, but we we are running out of time. Please go ahead and wrap up.
That is, that is fine. So that basically government needs to clarify what's going to happen with the French exit exam, how it's going to be applied, but it's not a good idea to apply that main same exam to uh the English won't be prepared. So to 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 end uh my point, I think that generally, the issue with Bill ninety six um is that it kind of uh it kind of um ça sous entendre. Um, I I'm sorry, I spoke French all day, so my brain is a little uh stuck in bilingual mode and French mode, I I should say.
Please feel free to speak in French. Please feel free and wrap up, please.
Yes, so basically that uh English CJ equals uh envisage vector That's how the government puts it. Um, the reality is that we're living in a French society where everything is in French. Your family, if it's already a a French family, you're still going to speak French with them. While you might might study in French and make a few friends in English uh in from the English community, it won't limit your fa- uh it won't limit your use of French, because you don't have a choice to use French. That's the first language in in Quebec. Um, so uh I think that government needs to clarify once again how how CJ are uh transforming Quebec's society, being more uh uh basically how how CJ are basically because they haven't really clarified that that point.
Merci, merci, Kevin. And I'm sorry to rush you.
No, it's fine.
Because you bring forward a perspective uh that that we hope a lot of uh your generation will be discussing with other uh others in their generation about how they are being limited in terms of the type of education that's provided in Quebec. Thomas, did you have a question?
Thanks a lot.
Before we wrap up.
Uh, first, I thank you very much for for your your testimony, and uh I had noted two questions about about CJ that I wanted to put to you, both of which you have responded to in in uh over the course of your presentation. Um, you obviously know the space incredibly well. Um, perhaps, you know, I will ask one one question, and it's when you spoke about the the friends that you had at Dawson who would not, uh were were this uh, were the rules within the bill applied, would not have that opportunity. And I suppose my my question is, what what options are left for them? Are these people who would have limited opportunity, would they leave? Um, with particularly uh with you being francophone and having studied in both sides, both languages. Um, what would happen to that group of people? Were, had they not had that option?
So I have asked that question to to these uh these individuals, and it was either two answers. One, they would go out of uh Quebec to study in English, so directly to university, or they would go to a French CJ and probably not enjoy it as much because they want to study in English and then go to uh an English uh university. And actually, I just want to say something. Uh, I I had mentioned that the the bill sets a dangerous precedent. I think also um this opens the door to possibly even putting uh larger caps on universities even. Um, and that's something that could be um explored by government eventually, and I think that is very worrying as well. Um, it, I don't know, I don't think government will go that far right now, but I I think that's something worth noting as well, that if they're doing it to CJ, which is already a higher educational institution, they could possibly do it to university and limit uh Quebecers' access to those universities, like McGill and Courtney.
Thank, thank you very much. And that you've raised a particularly important question at the end of your, at the end of your response, and thank you for that.
Thank you so much, Kevin. I I I'm sure there'll be more questions, but we we do have to wrap it up. I do want to thank you very much. And uh please uh inform your other uh friends, colleagues, whatever you want to call them, your generation of the impact on their future by Bill ninety six. So thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Um, very welcome. I want to answer a question that came up earlier. Somebody asked about the hearings. Uh, the hearings uh in the National Assembly normally are televised, and I'm assuming that these will be televised. Now, I don't speak on behalf of the government or the QCGN. Perhaps Kevin can has more information than I do on that. Uh, but uh they are televised, because it was a question that came up in in uh the chat room. So this wraps up our hearings. Uh, I want to thank, in particular, Thomas today, who was with me, but also Senator Joan Fraser, and also Mark Debatnik, who couldn't be with us today, but who were there for the other hearings, for most of the other hearings. Without exception, I can say that uh everyone's presentations were very incisive, very thoughtful and constructive. And that's what we aimed uh to achieve when we discussed about doing these public consultations, that they be constructive. We are all proud Quebecers. I know I speak for everyone who is listening in and for all at the QCGN. We are very proud, and we are committed to working with our neighbors to have a more inclusive and open society and to strengthen our democracy, not weaken it. As we said from the beginning, the input from all these hearings uh that took place over five days uh will inform the QCGN as they prepare for their brief and their hearings at the National Assembly in two weeks. So to close the hearings, I am going to ask Kevin Shar to provide an overview. And that's going to be a hard job, by the way, Kevin. An overview of uh every, not everything we heard, but a summary perhaps of the main points that we heard. So thank you very much, everyone, and it's been my honor and pleasure to be part of this process. Kevin, over to you.
In your hearing.
Yes.
Good. So I'd like to thank everyone for their uh enlightening and important presentations. Uh, at the outset, let me express the QCGN's gratitude to our four commissioners. Aleni Bakapanos, Joan Fraser, Thomas Ledwell, and Marcus Tabachnick. Um, you're all very busy people, and our community thanks you for giving your time and expertise to our public hearings. Um, of course, thank you to all those who participated. Uh QCGN is proud that over the past ten days, we've been able to bring together representatives of different elements of the English-speaking Quebec and provide them with a forum to share their views on Bill ninety six. We heard from a wide, wide range of Quebecers in the last few days, spanning from stakeholders in the health and social services fields, represented in the arts and cultural community, entrepreneurship and business leaders, those active in the education sector, women's rights groups, and under under and other underrepresented communities. QCGN has been clear that Bill ninety six represents the greatest overhaul in Quebec's legal order since the Quiet Revolution. It is a constitutional project. It preemptively uses the notwithstanding clause to override the Quebec Charter of Rights and Freedoms. We maintain that it'll make it harder to do business in Quebec and will have a negative impact on the vitality of Quebec's English-speaking community. We held these hearings because the Quebec government seems determined to stifle debate on the implications of this seminal legislation. We have succeeded in bringing increased public awareness of our concerns, but we have much more work to do. We have to keep spreading the word that this bill does not refer inclusive Quebec, where French is the common language that we cherish. The next phase of the debate is before the National Assembly, which starts next week. The QCGN will present its brief on September twenty eighth. We are going to make the time, take the time to digest what we've heard here to these last few days. But let me give you my first impressions. First, we are committed to supporting the use of the French language. As so eloquently said by Chris Neal of the Quebec Writers Federation, Bill ninety six is counterproductive in targeting English-speaking Quebecers who have proven themselves allies in the learning, speaking, and promoting French. English-speaking Quebecers invented French immersion programs, now attended by half a million students across Canada. We share with them not only a love for the French language, but also a personal investment in ensuring its survival. But we need a better and unifying path forward than offered by Bill ninety six. Second, we stand against the preemptive use of the notwithstanding clause. As Royal O R pointed out in his presentation, the Quebec was arguably the crowning jewel of the Quiet Revolution. Our greatest legal minds of that era, Maureen Scott, Crepo, along with successful liberal and governments crafted, adopted, strengthened, and implemented a human rights charter that was recognized as one of the most innovative, comprehensive, and progressive in the world. Premier René Lavec was so proud of the strengthened nineteen eighty-three version of the chart that he mailed a copy to every household in Quebec. With both Bill twenty-one and ninety-six, the Lago government has turned back on our deep proud traditions of human rights uh promotion and protection. As many have pointed out, that one of the worst aspects of Bill ninety-six is that is ninety-six, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to challenge any infringements on rights due to the preemptive use of the notwithstanding clause. As human rights lawyer Julius Gray puts it, it's not an identity question, it's a question of rights and freedoms. Third, we are concerned about the impact on the business climate. If passed, Bill ninety six will play a significant role in closing the tap on international cu- talent coming to Quebec to work due to proposed cap on the number of years children of foreign workers can attend school in English. Moreover, the additional red tape imposed on businesses, such as more bureaucratic reporting requirements, will only add to the administrative burdens already being carried by small business owners and restrict the time and energy they can dedicate to the success of their enterprises. And of course, the increased powers of the Office de la Longue Francaise and their right to conduct searches without a warrant and based on an anonymous tip is not conducive to positive business climate. Fourth, we agree this bill is harmful to the English-speaking community of Quebec. As many pointed out, Bills, Bill ninety six creates tiers of citizenship, which is decidedly un-Canadian and un-Québécois. The bill essentially others, English speakers, newcomers, and immigrants that have contributed to the province that they choose to call home. We must ask, why does the protection of the French language require new measures which will restrict access to justice, health, and social services, education, and government services? Let me be clear. We fundamentally disagree with Bill ninety six's definition of who is an English-speaking Quebecer. Let me cite the brief of the QCGN's Health and Social Services Committee. Under Section fifteen of the Health and Social Services Act, English-speaking persons have the right to service in English. This choice of words was deliberate and debated by the National Assembly and ultimately adopted in law. If recognized, the importance of communication to safety and outcomes and acknowledges that some people are not capable of or are uncomfortable dealing with health matters in the French language. This principle has been used consistently and is clearly set out in the guide for the development of access programs published by the Ministry of Health and Social Services. The right benefits over one million Quebecers who are English-speaking. Bill ninety six proposes to narrow the right to the persons who are eligible for English language instruction as set out in the Education Act. Such a definition will move the right to access services in English for three hundred thousand and five hundred between three hundred thousand and five hundred thousand in the speaking Quebecers. In closing, we all recognize that language and identity are sensitive topics in Quebec. As the debate heats up over the coming weeks with with the National Assembly's review of the bill, we encourage all to take part in a respectful and constructive manner so that we can work together to chart the positive and welcoming path forward. At the same time, please rest assured that the QCGN will continue to highlight the contribution English-speaking Quebecers make to this province. We will be promoting an inclusive Quebec where French is the common language. Thank you, and we look forward to continuing on this path with.
And that is a wrap, and thank you so much, Kevin. And thank you to everyone for their participation, for their voices. And we look forward to continuing to work with everyone that was here to be able to, as I said earlier, to have a more inclusive and open society and strengthen our democracy. Thomas, did you have one last word to say? To wrap up.
I will simply say thank you to you, Alenia. It's been an honor uh to serve in this capacity, and uh thank you very much for lending your your excellent skills as a moderator again.
Well, thank you, and have a great day, everyone.